Welcome to a special town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, August 28th, 2023. Uh, the meeting is now called to order. The roll call, please.
Councilmember Ogerton. Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Alkma. Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Roy.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Present. Stanford pledge allegiance, I'd like to, uh, former, two, we have two former vice mayors in the audience.
They can do it together.
Yeah. Would you two leave us in the pledge?
Have the American do it. Allegiance to the flag, and the next case to America. To finally reach a stand on nation under God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have only one agenda item tonight, and that is the presentation to council and council discussion regarding the status of the Integrated Utilities Master Plan presented by the Utilities Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, first, I'd like to introduce the project team that you're going to be, um, who's been working on the project since last December is when we did the selection. Um, so Jimmy immediately to my left is Brandy Thinkpen. Brandy's actually with Black and Beach. And Brandy's been before you, uh, before she actually helped us with the water treatment and supply optimization study that we did a few years ago. Um, so again, we went through a selection process and we selected Black and Beach. Uh, behind me is Lisa Jackson from Black and Beach. She's actually our project manager. Lisa has over thirty years of experience in doing master planning throughout the valley. Randy actually has over twenty-four years of experience in master planning in the valley. Um, on the wastewater system, um, they've brought on board Seth Morales from, uh, GHD. Um, Seth has actually eight years of direct experience and he was actually involved also with our, um, uh, collection system assessment project. So he knows our, this, our collection system. So he's helping us map out the, uh, from the master planning standpoint, our wastewater collection system and our wastewater treatment side, uh, of the, of the equation. And for water resources, we have Brad Hill. Um, Brad is a registered geologist, but he has over thirty-eight of years of total experience, including we worked together many years ago in Peoria for a short period of time. But actually Brad has actually also worked in the city of Flagstaff. He actually worked as their water resources manager and actually their utilities director is now he's, he's doing consulting. So, uh, before you, I have a, a team of experts and we have Michelle Vanqueathan also, um, to answer any legal questions, um, since water always seems to bring up any legal issues. So, so tonight's agenda is really to go through where we're at with the master plan. And we started last year and we awarded a contract. It was about December that we did the kickoff project, uh, the kickoff for the project itself. And, uh, when I talk about an integrated master plan, um, the, what that means is that we don't do the individual components because the water system all flows together. We're talking about our raw water resources. We're talking about our treatment, the distribution system. But then some of that water gets returned to us in the form of wastewater and we have to treat that. And then we actually do a reclaimed water system. So we look at them all in totality because they all feed together. They're not individual components. When we start talking about the systems, um, individual, obviously we don't run the wastewater system through the distribution system, but just if all the numbers actually do, uh, work together. So an integrated master plan is a great way to talk about that. And we start off with the planning phase, which is looking at how much water does the town need and where's it going to come from? So that's what we're going to start off with tonight's presentation. And our goal tonight is to give you an update on what we, the work we've done. We're at a point with the master plan that we want to have councils', um, input, uh, and citizens' input on where we're at. We've got some suggestions for some, some things moving forward, but we didn't want to bring the final report, uh, before you without actually getting your input. Uh, so we make sure that we're on the same page and we're, we're, uh, rowing in same direction. So with that, let's see if the presentation will start. Okay. So as indicated, we're going to talk about water resources. We're going to talk about water production and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, and then a water reuse options. Um, so, uh, we hope that we get some, uh, some consensus, consensus, concession on, uh, the assumptions and criteria that we're using for the master plan.
Speaking of water.
And no, the drought's not over. So. So we first start off with water resources and that feeds into water demands. So I'll let Brandy take over here and I'll just interject where I feel it's appropriate.
Sure. Um, thanks, Sean. So before we can do anything, we need to identify where there are going to be the growth in potential, um, demands in the system. So we have a good idea and a good understanding of where you're currently delivering water, but now we've got to figure out where is the, the town already obligated to or where there's the potential for some additional growth? So we have divided them into what we are considering committed demands. So that is either a certificated area or a subdivision where the town is already obligated to provide water to those. So the first area that we start looking at and they're shown up on these green, um, and I, I like to point in, if you guys care if I just stand and walk over, I'm sorry. It's easier for me if I move. So these green, uh, hatched areas, so those are what we're calling your certificated area. So those areas have a certain amount of water that's allotted to them. And some of them are already currently like partially developed. So that would be like Galloway Ridge. Um, there's some, uh, Rancho Mianas Villas that are already partially developed. And then there's some areas, that's Ylo Grande, this Desert Hills Ranch, where no development has, um, occurred within those areas. But you already have an obligation to serve those and those are, um, determined by ADWR. So they say a certain portion of your portfolio is allotted to those areas. So we have to take that as it's written currently, um, in ADWR, that allotment. However, often there are, what they're allotted in ADWR is greater than what they are using. But for the sake of this master plan, we have to, um, start with what's currently allotted. So we consider those committed. Other items of committed, um, would be committed subdivisions. So what we're showing here in some of these dark, um, black lines are subdivisions that you already have agreements. Um, for the most part, those subdivisions are more of a one-off, two-off. Um, but we went in to your parcel shape file and I then actually the town did, and then we used it. Um, went in and looked at every single parcel that's in a subdivision to determine if it's vacant or it can have the potential to develop on it. So for anything that has the potential to develop on, we can include those in the demand areas as well. But then you have all these other areas that sit outside of the committed area. Oh, and then the dwip, sorry, I forgot the dwip. The dwip is also considered a committed growth area. But we did want to look at what is the potential that for some of these areas that are outside these black areas that are contiguous with, and within the town. Um, what is the potential for their demand? So we had to go in and identify, just like we did, look at all of the, the parcels and identify. Could these people come to you and want service in the future? And if they did, what does the demand that would, um, be associated with it? And then the last area that we looked at is the Arizona State Land. And those are all the red, um, hatched, uh, lines on there. And the assumption with any of the growths that occur within the state land is that they would have to bring water resources with them in order for them to develop. So if you jump to the, unless you wanted to.
No, yeah, again, it says, uh, Brandy indicated, um, you know, we're going to, we talked about, we have, you've heard the term for certificates of assured water supply. That's the, they're like green areas we indicated. We have existing subdivisions that were actually developed and plotted prior to the groundwater management MAC in nineteen eighty. So that's part of the equation also. And when she's talking about the state land areas, the pre-annexation development agreements with them actually, uh, do state that, um, if they develop in the future, we will not have additional water resources. Most likely not going to have water resources for them. So they would have to bring new water resources to us. So that's how we were trying to figure out the accounting. But even if you take into all that, again, the light blue is the area we're currently servicing in town area. You can see a lot of the, um, the, the yellowish area and yellows are a lot of the parcels that could potentially come in and tie to it. And we had to make a distinction and do the calculations. Could we serve everybody with the water resources we have? Taking away the state land and taking away the other encumbrances. And the answer bluntly is no. We don't have enough water resources to serve the, everybody within the municipal limits. So that's, that's something that came in light with this process that we're moving forward with. We have to have a suggestion about that is then in knowing that, uh, how far do we all go with allowing individual connections to this, to the distribution system? So.
May I ask a question right here? Uh, there, there's a provision in the, uh, uh, state water law that the, that somebody who has the right to water. I've forgotten the, uh, city one, but they have to recommit every so often in order to keep that alive. If someone put something in thirty years ago and we're holding water that somebody could use today. Uh, Michelle, do you recall anything like that? With, but what I'm getting at here is some of this water we think is committed. If they haven't followed that process, they may not have that right to water.
Or, um, the areas that have a certificate of my shared waters. Yeah, it's on, it's on. Yeah. For the areas that have a certificate of assured water supply, they are, um, good for the plat that they were secured for forever. Um, they don't expire. They become unassignable after ten years and then they have to be updated. So there could be an opportunity for another review if they're assigned to a new owner. There's also an effort, I know in some water provider areas where they've become quite long in the tooth to actually go and abandon plats. So I don't know if that's something the town might eventually consider. And in some cases, the plats were never really approved to final plat. So there are a number of contingencies, but just because there a certificate of assured water supply in the town is committed to serve does not mean that the, there are not additional requirements that are going to have to be met for that developer to develop. So who knows if that'll happen.
Yeah. The, the only point here is the town should not give away that option if we get to the point where we're, where we don't have enough for someone. A project comes in, it, to me, it doesn't make any rational common sense to have something that happened thirty years ago. Keep a current project. Yeah, we may, we may want to invoke that and staff should be on the lookout for that if it comes up. That, uh, that ought to be a decision point as to whether that goes forward or not.
So I, Mr. American, I just got hypothetical.
Sure.
So Kahava Springs has been kind of not there for more than ten years. What do they have to do to get redone?
I actually got that certificate from the developer way back once. Their certificate is, it doesn't expire, but it is tied exactly to the plat that was offered, um, or the area at least that was offered with it. If, if a developer wants to develop pursuant to the original certificate, but they change ownership. And so, you know, Kahava Springs LLC would change to, you know, Maritage LLC. They would have to go through an assignment process. And in that process, if the certificate is older than ten years, they do have to do some updating. But it is, it's still good. It's just, it has to be updated. And in some respects, that may give the town the opportunity to update the requirements. But it's still a commitment.
Okay, thank you. Are lot splits something that we can fully account for and related to that in the state lands? Is there a significant, uh, possibility that somebody could do lot splits within the state land and thereby escape the assured one hundred year assured supply regulation?
I don't think with the arrangements that we have in place with state land for those areas, um, since the, the areas are defined, um, and we've, uh, in cases, say the core site, uh, the town worked with them to come up with a zoning entitlement, um, that allowed for more commercial development up in that area. That, um, that they would, we'd see that happening because if that, those, with those state lands to auction off those areas first, they got to make the auction off the entire area. I'm not sure if they'd subdivide them into smaller areas. That'd be, have to be a discussion, but we actually have the development agreements in place, uh, pre-annexation development agreements in place for those three larger properties. I don't think someone could come in and, and buy a couple of lots within that. And then we inherently just start providing services to them. They fall within that boundaries. If they came in to talk to us, we'd say you fall within the boundaries of Willow Springs area. You have to bring water resources for us to, uh, provide you service. We would, we would, we would be within our rights to do that as a town.
What rights to our citizens who are on exempt wells have should those wells fail or become inadequate? Are we, uh, obligated to provide them with Cave Creek Water Service?
I do not think we are. And in fact, if you look at it, all the properties in the yellow on the map, those are a lot of the people who have exempt wells or, um, um, not connected to the water system and we don't have enough water resources for everybody.
If I might. Yeah. And, um, there is no obligation under state law to take on new customers. Except for if you do take on new customers, you have to not discriminate. So what you're doing now is setting a plan and you could put in your plan that you're not going to provide water to the state lands. That's also in development agreements currently, but to the extent those expire.
And get renegotiated.
Right. So you could set that policy in this, this document, your plan. And some of the cities are doing this now, and then they're trying to use the plan to decide how to allocate their remaining water resources. Because it is the case that there are a number of water providers that don't have enough water to build out their entire service areas.
Thank you.
This, uh, Michelle, does, does that mean that you could, um, give water to one class of customers, but not to another? That discrimination issue you're talking.
That's a very good question. It's not really defined in the law what discrimination means. But I, I've always believed it to just mean that you have, you, you have to have a good reason for the distinction that is not, you know, because somebody wears bad clothes and the other person doesn't wear bad clothes. It's, it's got to be like, uh, for instance, if I, if I'm saying no to somebody today, but I said yes to somebody yesterday. But between yesterday and today, I decided that I ran out of water to allocate. That's a good reason because you're distinguishing between when they came to you in time based on your water resources. But if you're going to, you know, give the, the state lands a different treatment than not state land, I think that that needs to be part of a planning exercise. So people have, you know, some understanding that is the way it's going to be currently. Those are subject to development agreements that require them to bring water. So you've already done that planning in that respect. But, yeah, thinking ahead and planning for rational reasons, like maybe it's not a cohesive way to develop the city because they're too far out, you know, there, there would need to be a reason.
Okay. So now we've taken the, the map that we were just looking at and we're putting it into numbers. And so we have these numbers in gallons per day, but then also on the right-hand side of this table, this is an acre fee. Cause, um, just so whichever way you look at it, some people like it in gallons per day versus acre fee. Um, so, and what we're showing is, okay, today, existing demand, which is currently within the town as well as what is currently connected, um, out in desert hills. And so one of the things I should have clarified, with the exception of the two, um, certificated areas out in desert hills. We are under the assumption that there will be no additional connections outside of what you are currently serving desert hills. So the only new connections out in desert hills would be the certificated areas. So then we just kind of moved down in priority of, um, of future connections. So we have the two different types of, um, certificated areas, those with minor growth and with significant growth. Um, and we are asterisk, ask, asterisk being that that is per ADWR allotment, not what they are currently using. So that's again, getting back to what you guys were just talking about with the potential for some water on the table there. Then we go into, we add in the, um, committed subdivision and the committed web. And so with just those committed areas, the, um, annual demand is going to increase from one point five MGD to two point three MGD, um, with just what is committed. And then, and Brad's going to get up here in a few, and we're going to then start talking about water resources and what that looks like under a current, like if you have all of your, uh, resources available and some potential drought conditions, which is going to be prudent for you guys to look at. What does that, what happens to those supplies under various, um, drought conditions? So, so we are looking at what is existing and committed. And then we add in the vacant and potential and what we're considering those potential is exactly what you guys were just talking about. Somebody who's currently on a private well. So there's a structure on that piece of property. They're not connected to your system. And, but they're on a well. So that's what we're considering potential, but we kind of threw them all into the same bucket, whether or not there's a structure on that, uh, parcel or not. Um, that's another half a million gallons a day. And then the future growth areas, um, again, that's farther out and they have to bring their own water resources with it.
The future growth areas are the state lands, the four state land annexation areas.
So the, the, let's, let's get a bottom line here, uh, back in that graph. I mean, that kind of drives the rest of the, can we move back one?
Oh, back one, sure.
Yeah. So we, well, we have twenty-two, roughly twenty-two hundred acre feet of wa, of water, and we've got twenty, twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine committed. Is that right?
Yeah, two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight acre feet of municipal and industrial CAP water. And then we have, we do have some NNI water, which is help, helping use for desert hills.
Oh, say that again. Some M and I, you, you mean the, the NIA.
The NIA one, sorry, anyway.
But that's not.
Can't rely on that for growth.
So, yeah, so we are over, at this moment, we are overcommitted by fifteen percent, ten or fifteen percent.
If, if we don't have any other water supplies to deal with, yes. If we just look at our CAP water supplies.
I'm thinking back to previous presentations on this where we were never overcommitted like this before.
Yeah, some of our previous discussions we've had, we've actually looked at it and we've been working with ADWR to try and get better numbers for the certificated areas. And as you see, the, 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 um, committed cause areas, we do have some areas that have more allocation that we think they'll ever use. And we haven't been able to finalize that discussions with ADWR staff to get them to agree, partly for the future ones. They don't want to give up future water resources. I think we have an opportunity with the current ones. Where if we went back to billing records to actually have them reduce the amount of committed water, but this, this is purely a theoretical calculation showing that yes, if we don't move forward, we have some issues to deal with, with water resources for the town.
Um, okay. So that, I, I, I guess that, that then throws that particular aspect of this discussion over into the, the town's, but look, what are you going to do? Is, is that, is what we're going to do a part of the water plan or, okay?
Yep, sure is. We, we have some, if we get through, um, the next, so let me just jump real quick. Um, so this is just showing it again, um, slightly different story or slightly different ver, uh, presentation, but the same story. So we're showing what happens if there's no growth, what happens under moderate aggressive future? And then looking, and that's exactly what, um, what Sean was just showing, if we look at just your cap M and I, which is the darker black dotted line, it exceeds your moderate growth and your moderate growth includes all of your committed growth. Then if you add what we're considering aggressive growth would be the future and the potential. And then the, the future growth with new resources is the brown line. So under the, under a condition where you have a hundred percent of your cap allotment and a hundred percent of your NIA, yes, you have enough water to meet your committed demand. However, the NIA water isn't necessarily something that we can count on for planning purposes. So, um, and we are getting ready to go through the water supply piece of this and we can kind of hit this a little bit more with Brad. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
The, the previous slide, you said we had, our demand was twenty-five fifty-nine. And go to the next slide. And now we're, where's that twenty-five fifty-nine for our cap or for our current allocation? But we're above that, correct?
Yeah, I need to double check this. It's a little bit weird, but that would get us all the way out to here under the moderate growth. So your moderate growth is all of your existing plus your committed growth.
So we're already over.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, not today. This is where you are today.
But we're committed in the future.
Already, we're already.
To more than we have securely.
Yes.
That's the committed line. So we're going to have to come up with three hundred and some odd acre feet per year.
Yeah.
Can I share something?
Yes.
This is part of the reason for doing the master plan is we do look out again, we're looking out to a scenario of twenty fifty. So where are we at today? We actually have some mobility, but it, it slowly creeps in very quickly. We have to make decisions now. We, we have time to make decisions now. We don't want to wait till later to make those decisions.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Brad Hill, um, and nice to see you again, Vice Mayor. It's been a long time. Uh, one of the things that this graph, I'm going to step through, you guys are jumping to, jumping ahead, which is good. So we're just going to lead into this conversation. One of the things that's not on this graph is the groundwater that's being pumped. So actually it's not just CAP M and I, it's also the current groundwater at, at current rate pumping, not anything future pumping. So that total volume is two thousand four hundred and ninety-five acre feet, not two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight, which is your M and I. If you just allow me, now I'll go to the next slide and we'll just kind of talk about that.
Is the pumping, is that sustainable pumping? Is that something that we continue?
So, yeah.
And, and that's really my question. Is that sustainable into the future or I, do we know, I think that will be recharged at that rate?
So if you can ask, um, I talked to the, uh, again, I'm registered professional geologist and I talked to your consultant, although that's not what I'm providing here on the water resource side. I did talk to your, uh, your hydrogeologist, uh, last week on that exact question. Again, you guys just jump right to the killer points. If you could go to the next slide, Sean. Cause I think it'll talk, oh, sorry.
Who is search? Yeah, Brad's referring to is actually, uh, Clear Creek and associate, though, um, okay. The town engaged with Clear Creek and Associates, uh, just over two years ago, when we were, were working ahead with our town's water resources plan, which back then allowed us to put the new policy in place to, to limit new connections outside desert hills because they were on groundwater. And at that time, we did say that Clear Creek, uh, recommended, they said, the long-term, it's not sustainable for new growth, especially the well water out there. We've taken it a step further and actually had Clear Creek do some studies of the existing wells in town and also recharge potential in town to, to allow that to be added into the equation. Cause again, part of a master plan, you look out at the future of what the connected demands could be. And then you work into solutions. Obviously, uh, we don't have enough CAP, um, municipal and industrial water, CAP allocation to do that. So now how do you get to that point? And then part of that is again, the future growth is we do have some state land in there where state land would have to bring about fourteen hundred acre feet of water if they weren't wanting to develop. But that's something the town may want to develop, things like the core site that'd be beneficial to the town to get the tax revenue. So that's something we have to weigh into the future, but I'll let Brad continue.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. So to get to your question, Councilmember McGuire, um, the two oh seven, you'll see some red circles on this. First of all, what this table illustrates is what your water supplies are today and at projected to be at build out. Uh, those are the two columns. When looking at the horizontal rows, the, as we've been talking about that you, you know, your M and I priority, you know, your NIA, which is acceptable, susceptible to, uh, shortage, actually both of those are, but we put some red lines on there, uh, red circles on there. In terms of the groundwaters, what I was bringing up is the current pumping at desert hills is on average two hundred and seven acre feet a year. And we put a circle on that as red, just to exactly address that question is how, how sustainable is it? After talking with Clear Creek and Associates, I'm going to do a little extra work, uh, for Sean and are going to come up with a better number than that. I just literally talked with him last week, so I didn't have time to modify that number, but we recognize that number probably won't be at build out two hundred and seven like it is today.
Yeah, desert hills and Cave Creek itself are really part of a single system because we have to supply in both. So do, do your groundwater statistics include both, uh, entities?
They, they will. So on here we show zero, that's the other, that's the other, uh, red circle under the Cave Creek groundwater. So some of the solutions, since you've already jumped to the, the, you know, the, the story, the punchline, if you will, some of the solutions are going to be reclaimed water and recommendation of exploring groundwater solely from the emergency. And I, when I get to the scenarios that the staff has, uh, looked at in terms of, of potential future shortages of your CAP water supplies. Uh, we're going to go through some of them, you're gonna, we're going to recommend is a, a emergency type backup supplies for maybe for a year. Or we have a variety of options that we're going to bring forward to for consideration. Or we have a variety of options that we're going to bring forward to for consideration. But clearly that is one of them, not as a long-term sustainable supply. But perhaps as a, uh, as a backup supply, a lot of municipalities in the valley, uh, do exactly that. Unfortunately, your challenge from the, from the geology side is you're at the edge of the basin. And so you don't have a whole lot of groundwater like some of the other municipalities do. We, we have a shallow aquifer. And that, and that. And it's a separate aquifer from the Phoenix juice. Uh, cause you're up against, you're up against, up against the, uh, exactly up against the basin. So when looking at the total supplies, Mayor, I would come back to your comments about, um, the numbers at least. One of the things that we noticed was reclaimed water. If you bring reclaimed water and modify how you use reclaimed water. That's a resource that brings that number up if you look three thousand one hundred and seventy seven acre feet. So there's some ideas and thoughts and we're not, I don't want to jump to the end there. But, uh, on how you may want to manage the water supplies moving into the future to help mitigate the shortages that we're going to show. So if you don't have any further questions, I'll jump to the slide. So what this slide, and you're going to see several like this are, is Brandy's work that she just showed you, which are the horizontal lines of no growth. The green is moderate and the blue is aggressive growth. We didn't show the future growth on this slide. And then it's superimposed by these vertical bars, which represents your water supplies. The dark blue is your M and I in a normal year, your gray is the N I A, uh, C A P water in a normal year. And then the other darker blue is the groundwater that's currently being pumped at desert hills. So we superimpose your water supplies onto the three growth scenarios of Brandy mentioned. And then any, N A I water is not necessarily wet water. So those will be, it is today, but as we look to the future. Yeah. That's exactly. And, and, and what I'm suggesting, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm out of order here. Uh, what I'm suggesting is that having that as a part of the graph may be misleading. And we'll, we'll show you those. Thank you. Yep, exactly.
Yeah, it is not as secure as our municipal industrial, um, you know, this last winter was a good winter. So the projection is right now, we went from a tier two on C A P, uh, wash buys to a tier one this upcoming year. So, but yeah, the variability moving forward is something that, uh, Brad will get into some different scenario options that we need to consider.
What this graph is to illustrate is if everything were just to be the way they are today. You would, you would start, as, as you've already identified, you'd start to see shortages out in the late twenty forties, assuming a three percent growth rate, the moderate growth rate. Which we are committed to. That's our. Yeah, that's you're committed at a three percent growth rate, you're gonna hit. So you have some time to for a solution, but you've committed, you're, you're, you're going to end up with shortages. That's the point of this slide.
Yeah, if we don't change.
Correct. But you have time, that's, that's, however. And we all know that, uh, today isn't what it's going to be tomorrow. We all know those conversations. So that's why, uh, we've looked at alternative shortages of different ways to look at the drought. And what this table illustrates is a, uh, is a, a, a summary of the conversations that have been going on at statewide. Uh, uh, water resource conversations over this past year. And the intent of those were which ones are, which ones do we want, uh, to, to evaluate in, in this master planning effort? They each have a little different twist, uh, and different, uh, reductions in C A P supplies. And so let me just kind of step through these. Uh, we've talked about the full allocation, no reductions whatsoever. The phased in implementation of the drought contingency plan, that's what's, uh, existing today. It is going to be renegotiated between now and twenty twenty six. But what this scenario is, what if the renegotiations to say, let's just stay with tier, tier three? So that was one of the scenarios. On top of that same scenario, its companion is what if the federal government were to recognize that there's actually. Evaporation on the Colorado River system off the river and the dams, uh, are, are going to be attributed to the lower basin, the upper basin. That's part of the structural deficit that's been. What if they take another twenty one percent off as it relates to the state of Arizona's supply? So that's a thirty eight to forty eight percent. All of those on the right, all of those show N I A water going to zero. Every single conversation that's been in terms of these types of, uh, scenarios show N I A water going to zero. So coming back to the comments that were made earlier. The other one was a, the, what's known as the consensus based modeling. Um, as per the Bureau last summer asked this, asked the, uh, the lower basin states to, uh, conserve two to four million acre feet. This scenario is what six of the seven states came forward with. California came up with their own and it showed, uh, a thirty five percent reduction to M and I, just flat thirty five percent reduction. Uh, another one was what if the hydrology, what if twenty twenty two, three winner, this past winner didn't occur? And we still had the same hydrology we've been experiencing over the last five years. That's six point six eight six million acre feet coming off, uh, the river as opposed to now, uh, uh, C A P last week said it was thirteen point something million acre feet. So much different, but what if this scenario is what if we go back to that again? What does that kind of reduction look like anywhere from essentially half of the M and I's to towns M and I, uh, water supply? And then the last two are something that just occurred, uh, in April this spring as, as part of the, uh, uh, the, what's known as the supplemental environmental impact statement. Again, it's a process the Bureau reclamation is going through. They released two alternatives. Uh, and, and so we looked at that and what that would mean to, uh, to the town C A P supplies. What if those alternatives actually became, uh, and move, uh, moving forward? And the first one was a priority based, which would be what California would want. They're the senior priority. Arizona's the junior priority. So you would have a forty four percent reduction to your M and I supplies. Or they're more favorable to the state of Arizona. What if it's done on a pro rata basis? You know, we all play well in the pond and, and, and we all take cuts. That's a five percent reduction. So what that, with all of those, what we looked at and what the water resource team and, and Sean's team decided on, what we're going to move forward with. Is those shifted just a little bit is the, uh, full out is the, uh, is the full allocation and the tier three. So from zero, really just it's about the percent. So let me just talk about that. We're going to look at what if tier three were to continue into the future? So you lose, uh, essentially a quarter of your water supply, twenty seven percent. And then the bottom to the draft D I S, uh, forty four percent or something five percent. The reason why the team selected those four to move forward with is they gave us and you a, a broad enough range in reduction. Said it's going to highlight and flag either water resource issues, growth you can't meet issues or infrastructure problems. So we thought those were reasonable to move forward within this planning effort. So looking at the tier three, this is again, what if the conditions today, the drought contingency plan were to continue into the future? What that illustrates so that, with that, what that means is, is, is a reminder, N I A goes to zero in these scenarios. N I A goes to zero next year. Knowing, uh, we'll probably redo the math or want to redo it because we know at the earliest it'll be in twenty six, not twenty four. But we didn't know that when we did this math. These conversations are so fluid. That wasn't a pun, that was intentional. They're so fluid that we had to kind of stop, put the pins down and do the math. So we could, we could update these. So N I A goes to zero in twenty twenty four. And then there's a mention, the phased in reduction of your M and I supply from fourteen percent to twenty seven percent. So the answer, what the result of that is, you're going to hit a shortage, uh, you know, in five, six years. Under moderate, under, uh, uh, excuse me, under your existing, uh, under your. aggressive, excuse me.
The green, the middle.
Yes, you're great. Committed. Is your aggressive.
He's aggressive.
Correct.
You really want to focus on the green line on these graph.
So that's what this, excuse me, that's what this graph illustrates is you're going to hit shortages soon.
Yeah, and, and you have to choose something on which to base the work. Uh, but this, the statistic I hear all the time is Arizona is seventy percent agricultural with water, uh, from, from cap water. Uh, so there's, isn't there likely to be some kind of legislative or other actions to mitigate this and take more out of agriculture?
You, you're asking questions that are going to happen at the state level. And I mean, uh, if you want to jump in, but so those converse, nothing has settled yet. Everyone are in, uh, I'm working for several clients and they're facing this exact similar issue that what we're presenting. So we all hope that there's going to be some solutions at the higher level.
You might make an editorial comment here. Have you seen the kind of bills those people are working on? It is unbelievable how the trivial negligible things are being worked on when we have issues like this at hand.
I, the agricultural users in the C A P system are largely cut off. The only other agricultural users that we have are the Indian communities and they are really on a different sort of determination than the state users. So I don't see there being a C A P resolution.
So that's not going to ride to our rescue then. Okay.
But you say there, are you saying the agricultural users statewide are generally using groundwater?
No, actually they're using a lot of excess C A P water. They're also using groundwater.
Long as we have access. So the nutshell of this one, if the existing rules were to continue in the future, twenty thirty one is what we are showing, you're going to run into shortage. Of water supply. That's the, that takeaway out of this, out of this scenario. The next one is, um, what if the, the federal government's proposal gets legs and actually were to be, uh, uh, get implemented, uh, at post twenty twenty six? And what this one represents is what I said, would be what California want. This is the law of the river. That's what this model is, the less effectively the law of the river. Well, that would mean whenever it gets implemented in this graph, we said twenty twenty four, but we know it's probably twenty twenty six. If it were to get implemented, you would instantly be in a shortage. You, you couldn't supply your current customers or barely supply your current customers. I mean, there's a little wiggle room in there, but you would be instant, uh, challenged. And so everyone recognizes, uh, that that's a, uh, a big problem. It, it, it's my hope that as we move forward, the federal government will say what happened in nineteen twenty two, when the allegations were, allocations were made. Is not the conditions we have now, so that it is inappropriate to use the nineteen twenty two upon which is based the law of the river. Those will be the conversations that are going to be taking place when the six are the, you know, the, the lower basin states negotiate this out. Exactly. But this is the, uh, this is kind of where you could be assuming, uh, the law of the river gets implemented. If you take Arizona's position in this discussion, uh, at the, uh, the, under the supplemental draft D I S. Five percent reduction, well, you can weather a five percent reduction quite some time until roughly twenty thirty six. So that gives you some time to figure out what's your solutions to your committed, that we've already talked about. You've already overcommitted, uh, but it gives you a little bit of breathing room. It's not like, you know, tomorrow, so to speak. And when I say tomorrow, I don't really mean tomorrow. For those of you in the water resource world. Tomorrow is, you know, five year, you know, it's, it happens really fast. So we, it's, so we have to plan. Uh, so I didn't mean to say that you'd run out of water tomorrow. If one of these were implemented, I just wanted to be very clear about that. Uh, but you, you face some pretty strong headwinds when it comes to whatever the shortages are. Thank goodness for Mother Nature and the, uh, and, and what happened, the hydrology, what happened this year, uh, is it gave everyone a two-year break? Uh, but pedals on the metal, you got to find a solution. You can't get, you can't, you can't rest on those laurels by no means. These graphs illustrate that clearly. One, one of my concerns is that we knew that climate change was going to be coming about, that, that has been controversial. What we seem to be seeing is that global warming and climate change is happening faster than was anticipated. And so with this graph is, this graph is a kind of a summary. It's a summary at, uh, at build out. Uh, these are the shortages. So they're pretty large shortages at twenty fifty. I've shown you those other graphs between putting Brandy's growth and, and the water supplies on top of each other where those were the timing of when those shortages occur. This is the total volumes at build out. Relative to your committed and your aggressive growth. Do you want to talk about that one?
Will it, can, can we pause a talk before we move on to? The implications here, there's some pretty heavy implications behind this right now. I mean, you told us number one is we, we're overcommitted. We're overcommitted in desert hills where we have you to water that they don't possess by allocation right now to some certificate, two certi- or certificated. Uh, subdivisions. So you start looking at what you're going to do currently, let alone. Out with the drought contingency issues.
And the water that we have to send to desert hills, we can't control. And we're finding that that is increasing.
Actually, in fact, since we put the twenty twenty one water, uh, uh, resource master plan in place or, uh, rub, water resource policy. The, the growth out in desert hill has stayed fairly static, the demand out in desert hills. We still have these two, uh, two large certificated areas that are committed to. Um, I've actually had one developer talk to me about it, but that, in, in both cases, there's actually infrastructure, uh, agreements in place too, where they have to build some infrastructure. One case they have to bring some water resources to us, but not the full allocation. But, yeah, we want to be realistic, but I think the, the work that we did in twenty twenty one has helped the city. How it has helped the town, sorry. Um, you know, we, we also rely on those customers to provide revenue to the town also. So we had to sort of balance that out. You know, we are providing them, uh, water, but we have significantly degree decreased, if not almost, uh, have a zero growth out there. We do have some future commitments that we need to account for in a water resource discussion though.
But they are running out of groundwater. So.
Uh, the ground, yeah, you know, of the three wells that we have out there, the, uh, Third Avenue and Joy Ranch, well, the groundwater table has been more stable up there. We think what's happening is Anthem has been doing some recharge and we're getting the benefit of that recharge. The two lower wells that we have at Galvin at Hen Street, uh, more towards Carefree Highway, yes, they've been more stressed and the production has gone down. But the, the Third Avenue Joy Ranch has been more stable and actually groundwater table.
So Sean, in, in total, then, are you saying that we are at a steady state as far as their aquifer is concerned?
I wouldn't go as far as to say that. I think we're, we're, uh, we believe their recharge to Anthem is doing upstream or benefiting from right now. But, um, that could go away as soon as they stop recharging.
And, and based upon my conversation with Carter Creek, I'm going to come up with some guestimates of what? And so absolutely we think going into the future, using that two hundred and seven, meaning the current pumping right now at desert hills is probably not what we would recommend. The, uh, to plan for, I would plan for some decreased pumping. From, from those, from those wells. So Mayor, can I go to this slide? Cause you've been, you've been asking about all kinds. So you just dropped this big stuff in front of us. Now what, what is, we didn't want to tell you the problem and then not give you an opportunity at a solution. Or at least ideas for you to think about. And so that's kind of what this slide represents. And this slide is kind of our, the water team's, uh, ideas at, at the high level. And I, we've separated them into administrative and wet water. Administrative being more agreements and things. And so let me just quickly just step through them and I'll let the whole team ask or answer questions. If you have any, uh, on some specifically. So first thing you, you have the emergency powers available to you. And now I'm talking about, let's say forty four percent reduction in twenty twenty six, meaning the, the, the U S Bureau of Reclamation moves forward with the pro rata. Uh, uh, excuse me, the law of the river. You have, you have powers that they may not. So you have those, uh, some of this is going to be mitigated. Some of this problem is going to be mitigated by the water bank. So we don't know what that is yet. So the numbers that we're showing you, they're probably going to be softened a little, at least in the short term. Because the state of Arizona has been recharging all kinds of water through the water bank. Uh, so there's still discussions and negotiations on how was the, how is that going to happen to, to help municipalities early on? But I think what you're going to find is the water bank is going to help you sooner and not into the future. So they're going to soften the blow, but you're still going to have municipalities are still going to have to deal with it. The other recommendation is, uh, you should continue doing what you're doing now. For any water that you can afford to put in the ground, put it in the ground. I mean, and the staff obviously started that. So that was an obvious one. Another one is what you may want to begin to do, uh, uh, there's several entities, tribal and municipal that have not grown into their M and I supplies. And in fact, they're storing a whole bunch of it in Lake Mead as we speak this year and next year. You may want to begin to have a conversation or direct staff. You may want to begin to have a conversation or direct staff to have a conversation with them to say, hey, if twenty twenty four and it's for and and happens and and everybody gets these drastic cuts or the hydrology changes, whatever the scenario that we showed, just pick. Can we, can we get access to your C A P water for like that year? Because that can, because they're not going to, they they, again, there's new several of the larger tribes and uh, uh, cities that haven't grown into their needs. So they may be, be worth a trial balloon to see if they'd be interested even in to even go after that, because that what that would do is keep your plant wet in the short, in the short term, you could get some water supply of them.
Now that conversation is going to be coming to them from a number of towns, not just Cave Creek. So should we be working in aggregate?
That might be the case. So what city's already done, you saw, maybe you saw the the Arizona Republic yesterday, today. Uh, so some cities are already making deals. So with the city of Tucson, city Tucson doesn't have a water treatment plant. City Tucson pumps groundwater so they can withstand shortages much better than you. Town of Cave Creek, you're you're very much a water treatment plant based entity. So they're doing uh, agreements and you just read about those, or if you haven't, you can get on Arizona uh, Central and read those. Uh, so they're doing exchanges, uh, we put water with you. And then when there's shortages, we'll take your water. So it's that kind of concept. This is a little different, though. This is taking their unused portion and saying, can we get access to that for a year or two years, whatever?
Yeah, their groundwater, though, is largely coming from C A P recharge.
It is. And so, yeah, so there's been a handful of cities that have been working and what I'm recommending. Uh, the team is recommending is you may want to consider if they're even interested in entertaining that, because that could help you in the short term. If something were to happen in two or three years, those kind of conversations today. Is see if they even are interested, uh, would it help keep your treatment plant wet, so to speak, if you follow, follow what I mean by get you water today. And then.
Before you go on there, though. We've got all these commitments for water. This growth, this natural growth going. It would seem like one of the very early things to do is to change that policy now. I mean, why are we giving out water meters with these kind of numbers? John?
That's a good question. That's one of the reasons we're doing this master plan. It's why I don't sleep well at night, so. Is to see, you know, at what point do we have to say that? You know, we we did it in desert hills because uh, it was really a water resource base issue that water company did not have surface water and we were supplementing them with service worship made sense. What do we do in the the near term in the town? Yes, that's a discussion we need to have and to think about more. There are other options to get new water resources into the town. Uh, well, as we go through the presentation, we'll present those, so. Yeah, when I first, I think it was a few months ago, we had this presentation internally in one of the project meetings. Yeah, I did not sleep well the last next couple of nights trying to figure this out. And there's no easy solution, but it's good to have the conversation and we need to have the conversation now.
Okay.
Yeah, we need you to sleep well.
So the second half of this table is the website, meaning what what will get your real water, not agreements or anything at this moment. Um, and so we've already mentioned, talk about, you may want to consider drilling new wells or will rehabilitate your existing just as an emergency, if something were to occur. Um, I'll let Sean, I think the team's going to be talking about these efficiencies, number two. Uh, the obvious is three, if anything comes available on C A P, we have to put it there, just although we know understand his challenges. And then really what what uh, the team has recognized is you might want to take a hard look at your reclaimed water, and I know Brandy and Sean and others are going to be talking about that in the future. Uh, exactly how you deal with efficiencies and are recharging your uh, uh, unused reclaimed water. I believe with that.
Yeah, we just want to wrap this up by talking about, this is one of the reasons.
One of the reasons the town is moving forward in in twenty twenty one, we did the uh, water resource policy, which uh, limited new growth, uh, new connections outside of the town's municipal limits, unless there was a statutory or contractual obligation. Last year, we worked on developing the drought, uh, water shortage and drought management plan. Where we better define what a drought means to Cave Creek specifically, because right now we are such as Colorado River C A P supplied system. Um, so we've been working on that plan. I just want to bring it forward that I was supposed to be coming back to council with the second reading of the code changes to to allow us to enforce that plan moving forward. We've seen, we since had some feedback from uh, both council, more so from the public. So we're actually revisiting the document as as written and we're going to still want to plan to bring it forward, because it gives us one of the 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 tools that we need. Which is the ability for council to make these hard decisions moving forward. And as we defined in the the drought management plan is that we'll come forward on an annual basis and and more often frequent as necessary is that we'll be watching the water projections as well as our supplies and physically bring it to forward to council. Are we in a case where the town's in a shortage and immediate need? The master plan is looking out, uh, you know, to twenty fifty and before that, when the issue is going to occur in the drought management plan helps really fill that in, but we still need to uh, move forward with the town uh, code changes to allow us to be more proactive and not have to deal with this reactively when it comes up. We know we're going to have to deal with something, but um, I just wanted to give uh, council an update on that. We did not come back for the second reading because we're doing modification to the text and we'll be coming back. What we're really doing is is taking out a town code, the we had some specific stuff in there about what out, how we defined outdoor uh, watering. And we're going to remove that and give the town council a more latitude in the future. If we get to that situation, what does that going to mean to individual customers? It's something we want to be more conversational, won't be in town code, but it's still something we need to move forward with. And with that, uh, you know, the next phase of it, we talked about the water, what, you know, the wet water, paper water, but we actually need to actually get water production and distribution. So once we actually get the water rights and moving the water around, the system is another big component. That's why, again, an integrated master plan. You look at your water resources and then how can you move that water around? So the next portion of the master plan was to talk about water production and uh, water distribution. And we're actually going to talk about fire flow requirements to kick that off. And then we actually have, um, we have Jim Ford with us. Yeah, one of the things we wanted to talk about, um, it was actually based on the last master plan, which is twenty thirteen, so it's been a long time since we've done a master plan. Is it was uh, talking about what is fire flow and how is that defined for Cave Creek? In twenty thirteen, it was defined as trying to meet two thousand gallons a minute of fire flow for single family multifamily residential units. So eighty eight percent of our customer base is residential units, um, and three thousand gallons a minute for commercial and industrial. That truly didn't uh, doesn't fit Cave Creek and that that had a couple of repercussions, including looking at most of the town's booster pump stations requiring significant improvements to those booster pump stations and most of the distribution system. We still have a lot of six inch and smaller lines in our distribution system. And you can't move two thousand gallons a minute and anything smaller than an eight inch line. So back in twenty nineteen, they came up with a recommendation of about forty three million dollars in improvements that were necessary to the distribution system in order to meet that fire, fire flow requirement. We've been talking internally and um, Jim, do you want to come up? Because uh, we actually, we have the uh, ability to talk to Jim Ford. Jim is actually involved in the creation of some fire standards in in um, Scottsdale. So what we're projecting, our one present to council, and hopefully you agree, is some standards that Scott still developed. And Jim was actually instrumental in helping develop this, where Scott still had some similar situations where they had pressure zones or areas of their system. They could not provide the, you know, a thousand or two thousand gallons a minute of fire flow, which is more typical for residential subdivisions where you have loop lines and you're more stable pressure zones. We don't have that. And then what Scott still came up with was a standard and it was largely based on the fact that Scott still had had a standard similar to the town of requiring residential homes to be sprinkled. So you have a lot of the the uh, life safety requirements are being covered. So once you take that equation out or that life safety factor in, then you can go uh, deal with uh, smaller volume. And what was decided in Scottsdale, it shows up in their development standards is five hundred gallons a minute, which is a much easier threshold for the town to meet. And I think more so, it actually better fits our topography and uh, fits our dis- our existing distribution system. And if we were to move forward with the twenty thirteen fire infrastructure assessment. That forty three million dollars from twenty thirteen is probably eighty to a hundred million dollars worth of improvements that we'd have to move forward with. And I personally don't feel it's prudent for the town, um, of our sides in our system to do that. We'll run into things like water quality issues. If we have to start oversizing pipelines, which we already uh, struggle with in our system. As well as you'll have uh, booster pump stations, we'll we'll sit unused, so I'll have booster pumps that unless I test them, will never get used for fire flow events. But I'll let Jim talk about maybe some of the process that he worked with when he was in Scottsdale to come up with the criteria that we're looking to follow.
Well, thank you, Chairman Mayor and Council. Um, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing that I did. But um, when Sean was talking about this, um, we did a lot of studying way back in the early eighties on this. When we first went to our, it's basically required zero square foot. If you build in the city, you're going to have to protect the structures. Um, life safety for residential, commercial for for that. And so um, the water department, as we mentioned, we worked very closely with the water department and the calculations and all that. And so what we came up with is what you're seeing on the screen is for residential, a minimum of five hundred gallons a minute. For commercial, a minimum of fif- and multifamily, a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons a minute. And if you ask a lot of the fire departments, they'll say that's not enough, we can't do that, you know, we need more, we want more, like your original study said. But in reality, we've been doing it there since nineteen eighty five, nineteen eighty six. And, you know, we, every time you see a big fire, the fire guys say we need more water, but that's just not true at that point. You're not going to save the structure as it is. So if we could get five hundred gallons a minute in the residential areas and fifteen hundred gallons a minute in the town core is really the only area you're going to need the town core in your commercial areas. Then that is a huge relief to Sean's system. And the way that you do that, uh, six inch mains can do that, six inch mains can easily do that. Especially if we can loop them, if you can take every opportunity you can to loop those mains, which is what we did. You put, we could push a thousand gallons a minute through a loop six inch main. And we have not had any issues, and I've been there a long time before Kerry talked me into coming out here. But I was there a long time. We did not have any issues, even with the big houses that we built up in Desert Mountain and up in D C Ranch and those areas there. Were huge, huge houses. The protection is built in, the protection is built in for those homes. And so it's up to them, if we give them five hundred gallons a minute or have the ability to get five hundred gallons a minute out of the system. They can protect their structure. You've done that now. I I meant to write down the date that you passed your ordinance, but it's been what, um, ninety eight or something like that? I can get that for you and we'll get that for you. But you've you've been sprinkling homes already, about forty percent of your houses are sprinkled. I was asked that here a little while ago. It's about forty percent of your homes are already sprinkled. Um, your biggest risk is probably your commercial buildings. Um, right now, the guys and gals on the truck are bringing, we're bringing almost a thousand gallons, seven hundred to a thousand gallons on an engine. And we're going to be bringing the tankers and tenders, which again, if you look at the contract that we have with Daisy Mountain down the road, town's going to end up buying a tanker just because of that, a twenty five hundred gallon or so tanker. But if we can't get it that quick with that water and then the ability to refill those five hundred, we're not going to get it anyway. And so we we will lose that structure.
And graphically, what does that look like?
Graphically, uh, what's that look like for the town? This, this is a model which shows how much fire uh, well, we could get to the individual fire hydrants. All these data points are actually the existing fire hydrants on the system. Can see, you know, zone seven and zone four are our main systems. They run through the town core, run down south and it feeds in the zone one. Uh, we have good fire protection down there. It's on the peripheral. Um, zone ten, seven, ten is actually Galloway Ridge down in that area and zone eight. And zone nine, we're actually looking at, I've been asking and bugging Brandy about, can we link zone eight and zone ten together? Because then we could actually loop the system and there's that, we'd have two booster stations that could actually help feed that area. We have to see if it can physically work. But it's more on the peripheral, we have that, we have um, a small zone uh, called Schoolhouse Booster Station on on the south side of uh, Schoolhouse. Um, and then we have another one called Kahava, which currently are, no, um, uh, Carriage Two, which currently only feeds three, two homes. Um, and then Thirty Eighth Street, we have some low pressures up there, so. Um, overall, it's not going to be a huge impact, but again, if we go back to and use the old criteria, and that's why doing a master plan, you want to set those criteria. Because then you can evaluate the system and then you can drive into the improvements. Um, we thought it was prudent to look at that and come up with this lower standard, which better fits the topography of town. Uh, the town of Cave Creek and our, the town's distribution system.
And if I, if I might, if this standard that we had put in place in nineteen eighty five had not worked, it would have been changed by now. It's not changed. You do the codes, the fire codes and the building codes about every three years. You come up and this is in the appendix. We actually moved this into the um, Scottsdale revised standards for the requirement for sprinklers and the requirement for the fire flows. And that's, again, I talked to Chief Tobin about this and go, he goes, well, we always want more water. Of course, you always want more water. But in reality, um, five hundred gallons a minute, if we get five hundred gallons a minute out of a hydrant, that's two inch and three quarter hand lines. Which is about what you're going to use on any residential. If you go to a master stream, which is a thousand gallons a minute, you you've lost the structure and if the ladder goes up, the building's coming down pretty much. But the hand lines, you can pump two hand lines consistently out of five hundred gallons a minute. And that's, that's what you're looking for, for your residential areas. Again, it's a little bit different in the commercial zone, but um, if these numbers had not worked and if our neighbors to the east um, had would have had problems, this would have been changed, would have been changed a long time ago. But what you did years ago with the sprinkle ordinances that you put in place, allow, would allow you to do this now, in my, my opinion.
And we do have some options and some recommendations that we put in the master plan to try and um, in- improve fire flow where we can. Um, we can do things like uh, can um, do connections at booster pump station so we can bring in a diesel pump. In some of our booster pump stations, we actually only have single phase power. That actually limits the amount of of boosting capacity, capacity that we can install. So we may have to look at that, either have connections or bring in, uh, have a diesel power pump at that site to increase the boosting capability. Uh, we've talked about some stuff, hardening of the system at select locations, where we've actually talked with Jim, um, because they're doing the helicopter pad at at Spur Cross Ranch. Uh, the parking lot area, our twelve inch pipeline currently ends about, uh, I think it's less than half a mile, more like quarter of a mile away from that location. We're going to put a new fire hydrant up there so that in the event of a fire, they can either run a tanker truck back and forth and keep a tank full. Or we can run some temporary lines up to that helicopter pad. And we're actually talking about potentially doing a helicopter pad right next to the twelve inch line, so we could keep water filled. That's one location, but we'll work with Jim and and Daisy Mountain to look at other locations that where we could harden the system effectively. Make sure that we have the capability providing water to those areas. We like to look at increasing hydrants. The town doesn't have a hydrant infill program right now. That's something that we'd recommend that we do look at and really focus on the town commercial areas, where we'd want to make sure that we have the proper spacing. Uh, more standard spacing. Right now, um, the system's been designed and it's been more so the individual homeowners. If if per the the adopted uh, building code, if the fire hydrants, um, if there's a, it's our on-town connections to water system and there's a fire hydrant, uh, more than six hundred feet from the property line, they have to install a new hydrant with new development. So that's been organically how we've been doing an infill program. I think we need to move forward with our own infill program and focus uh, specifically on the commercial areas first. And then we can start moving that out into the rest of the distribution system. As Jim indicated, looping of lines, it helps both water quality and allows us to move more water. Uh, dual-fed six inch line will move a thousand gallons a minute all day long. It could be stressed if you're trying to move that, if it's a single dead-end line. But that helps our water quality and also helps the distribution system. So that's another thing that we look at through the lens of the master plan of where do we want to do those loops and where's it most practical? Um, and then uh, there are uh, indication of hydrants at lower capacity that you can actually paint the bond in a different color. It's actually in the fire code. Um, white, black, if we get the other color schemes to indicate to the uh, the fire department says they come up, whether it's a thousand gallon a minute or five hundred gallon a minute pump. So as they come up and approach that. And our focus in the last couple of years has just been getting all the hydrants up and operational and, you know, painting them all orange. I'd hate to paint them different colors, but this is just the bond at the top color of it. So as a fire department pulls up, they would know, you know, hey, this is an area where we might not have a thousand gallons a minute, we have something less, but uh, again, our focus to date has been more make sure all hydrants are functionally working and we're 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 well down that path. But uh, yeah, we have some things that we can work with in conjunction with this new standard and we just want to make sure council's aware of this and and you know, in concurrence with it before we move forward, because it is a change. It was a change from the twenty thirteen master plan. But in fact, even though the twenty thirteen master plan was out there, the town never moved forward with any of the improvements that were suggested. So we're, we're at a reset point in my mind.
A couple of comments, you don't, do you need anything from council to implement the five hundred gallon standard, engineering standard?
No, no, if if council agrees, then we'll just keep moving ahead with it. And then when Brandy does the modeling, we can just, we can just do that. We just want to, we didn't want to shock you and bring it forward in the final adopted.
Mayor, it would come back as an appendix in the building and fire codes when that comes through again. We can make that change. In the meantime, you'll adhere to that standard? In the meantime, you're not meeting the other standard anyway, so it doesn't. Yeah, I mean, I mean, uh, Councilmember Smith and I were on the committee that had that forty three million dollar and it was, it was a joke. I mean, the the town doesn't have enough money to do that and uh, still probably. Uh, but the what what I think is missing here is wildland fire. I I I don't see that, that there is, I don't see, maybe you've done it, I don't see it, but it seems to me that we've had what those three big fires, two that we were in town, another fire, the Cave Creek complex fired that threatened town all the last twenty two years. And that has the potential for massive property and loss of life.
So uh, what, every six or seven years, that's a, pretty often.
If you were to put these standards in, I don't think that uh Cave Creek is any more at risk of wildland than Desert Mountain or. Or uh the fire like we had and all that over there.
Point is, we're not gonna put it in overnight.
No, I know.
It, it seems to me that the town ought to have a policy, a, a wildland fire. To, to build that portion out first. If we're gonna start putting in hydrants and booster pumps and electrical and. Tanks, how are you gonna deal with TTHM and have enough water to feed these if we are limited by TTHM test?
Uh, the tankage we were talking about, actually, tanks that would be used or set up locations where in a fire event that they would actually have a location that they can either. I think Jim was talking about working with Daisy Mountain to set up locations that they would actually have a, a spot where helicopter can dip water out of. Uh, on a regular basis and set up during the fire season and something that we'd make sure that we can make sure we can get water to that tank is what I was thinking of. Not a storage tank from a distribution system, but more of a fire tankage.
Yeah, that, well, these would be temporary tanks. I'm thinking, we haven't done anything yet. There's no contracts or any of that stuff, but. Um, these would be temporary tanks that we would set up during the fire season. If you wanna see a similar situation, it's at the uh, the top of the, the rim as you're going up to Prescott. They have the state land department and state forestry have a temporary tank that they put up there for those wildland fires at the top of the rim every year. That the helicopters can just come in and fill up. You can fill up either with tankers, or if we have a hydrant that's close, like Sean was talking about, we can fill them up with. Uh, with hydrant water. Um, but those tanks are just temporary and the, the helicopters in, in essence are your best use. Of small amounts of water. They're about a thousand gallons a drop, as those are. So if we put in a two or three thousand gallon tank, the helicopters can make a couple town drops while we run tankers, water, fire water tankers to it. The second thing is on, on brush fires and wildland fires, um, they're fought different than structural fires, completely different than structural fires. The goal is um in, Mayor, from Mayor's accounts, if you'd like, we can go out and take a look at the most recent diamond fire, which is more similar to what happens here. The goal is to put a brush truck or an engine on a house and push the fire around the house, which you saw a little bit in two thousand twenty. And push it to a place where it's either not threatening homes and, and lives, or a place where you can cut it off, either with air tankers or helicopters. And so it's completely different and it's a lot less water than you see when you see it uh on the news. Phoenix or Tempe or Scottsdale putting a lot of water on a structural fire when they all surround it and drown it. You can't surround and drown a, a wildland fire. So a, like our brush truck that we have with three hundred and fifty gallons of water is a huge asset. A lot of brush trucks only have a hundred gallons of water. Ours is two or three times as much. You can do an awful lot of fire with those types of trucks. And that's another reason why our engine is gonna have a thousand gallons of water. Just because we can, we can protect a house with a thousand gallons of water. You're not gonna be putting out like a structural fire. Structural fire. Um, requires um a lot more consistent and, and flows on it. So what we would do, you don't, you don't set a fire engine on a hydrant in a wildland fire. You maybe put a tanker there to pump it, but they come and they fill and they leave it. You don't put assignments on the hydrants. And so wherever you can have the hydrants or wherever the closest hydrants are, is what you would end up using on a wildland fire, as opposed to laying from that to this, the, the. The area that you're fighting. It's a completely different theory and method.
I almost sold the meeting down, but we only had one hydrant at Spur Cross, and I don't think that worked during the Okati Fire.
That's right.
And it, the fire comes out of Monto National Forest, or if it comes. From the, the west and the state lands, all that stuff over there. If it comes from the, from the east, from Desert Mountain and from Carefree. Wouldn't it be nice to have some hydrants out there that we could use?
Absolutely. That's, that's what we're talking about. Water and.
Building commercial, I didn't hear wildland.
No, uh, it's the second point, hardening the system at select locations. So that's why, right then now, at the top end of the, the twelve inch line, which is again about half a mile south of Spur Cross. Ranch parking lot, we're putting in a new fire hydrant that currently doesn't exist.
One.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna work with Jim on other locations and identifying.
That's, uh, those are getting into residential areas, so those would be hydrants that are a little remote, but they would have five hundred gallons a minute. Five hundred gallons a minute is a lot for a wildland fire for us.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is don't forget about wildland fires. I didn't get here. Don't forget about it, because that's the big disaster like Lahaina. Paradise, we've had three here. Uh, history shows it can happen here.
With that, thank you. So again, we just wanna bring that. That's one of the things that we thought was significant enough. We wanted to bring it to council before we wrapped up the master plan. So it does have implications as far as what improvements are gonna be needed as far as the master plan or what recommendations. So. With that, we can move on. Thank you, Jim, for helping to keep that discussion. So the next point of discussion in regards to capacity is the water treatment plant itself. Um, so the town does have our own uh water treatment plant. We've had that in place since nineteen nineties when it was actually constructed. And, uh, sorry, moving ahead. Um, and we actually have a decision point uh to make with that plant, just because uh next year, when we put the Palm membrane units in. Back in three years ago now, uh, we actually got an operational permit for the plant to say we could run both the existing West Tech Trident filters. And the Paul filters and the Pauls were considered a temporary improvement project to help us get over water quality issues. At the time, it was total organic carbon. TOC removal. It's been very successful at doing that, but the operational permit actually expires next November. Um, so they gave us four years to run the plant. So what we're trying to do is actually look at that and the good, right now, we have a, 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 a plant that's rated. To produce three million gallons of treated water a day into the distribution system, which we've seen this past summer being hot and, and, and. Uh, the demands were up that we expected the demand to be a little bit less, cause we've lost some carefree customers, but the customers are actually using a little bit more water. So. We just wanted to highlight the fact that we're, uh, we don't have a solution right now, and we're starting the discussion with the county about a year in advance. Just to know whether the, the, um, they'll ask us to convert to this to Paul only plant. And the implications of that is instead of having a three million gallon day treatment plant, the town will only have a two million gallon day treatment plant if we can't run it, the hybrid plant with the West Tech filters. The West Tex do have um some negative factors in the fact they don't treat water as well, and they produce more backwash water in every gallon that you treat. The West Tex require more back flushing and all that, so it factors into all of our capacities, but. Having the ability to run both gives us some for more flexibility. We are still working ahead with the connection to the city of Phoenix and the interconnect where they will treat and deliver to us some of our town's water resources, which reduces our. Our need for the treatment plant uh capacity right away, but we also wanna do that for redundancy reliability. Um, uh, but yeah, so as the Phoenix interconnect comes online, we'll be coming back to council. We've awarded the contract to MGC for pre-construction services. We're starting to get the final design number or for final construction number. She'll be coming back to council with that shortly. But we wanted to make sure, we wanted to council's aware, one of the session points with master plan is to try and figure out. What size of the plant do we need and then to meet our future growth? Cause with the connection to Phoenix, we are limited to a thousand gallons a minute right now, uh, which is one point four million gallons a day. To, to get a second connection to Phoenix, which is allowed for with the intergovernmental agreement that we have with Phoenix, we'd have to look at other infrastructure improvements. Re- redoing the cap pipeline to convert that into a potable water line is an idea that's been thrown around, but that's gonna require rebuilding all the booster pump stations. You know, a few years ago, that was a five million dollar project. I, I would suspect to be much more expensive right now, but that's the type of things we have to factor in. I don't think we need to make a, of a decision right now with the master plan. We'll just bring this forward. Um, and then we, but we are, I wanna make sure the council's aware, we are having that discussion with Miracle Pop County, because our operational permit does expire as of November of next year. With the current plant as permitted with the West Tex and the Pauls. And again, when we did that permit, they said the Pauls were a pilot program. So at the minimum, we'd wanna reverse that, cause the Pauls do provide the best quality water. And also produce the less reject water. It's the most efficient process we have. I just wanted to make sure that council's aware of that discussion. And then the next improvement that uh, this actually came out of the last master plan, and we've got some more information. So we talked about the Cloud Road Water Line. What is that? That's the water line that extends out of our pressure zone one. And explain, extends to the western side of the town's boundary and it also provides the connection to Desert Hills. Um, this, uh, we have a, a section of single uh eight inch water line. We have two inch eight in, two eight, two eight inch lines that cross Cave Creek Wash. And they combine together. So the highlighted section you're seeing on the right side of the screen shows where it's just a single eight inch line. This past year, we've installed what is the Mission Skater Systems. We've installed it both at our Thirty-Eight Street Booster Station, which, which then boosts up Thirty-Eight Street. And we couldn't understand the pressure swings we were seeing on incoming flow. We said, no, this can't be true. And then we started doing some more pressure logger and we said, oh, yes, it actually is. And then recently, we completed a new Mission Skater System at the interconnect side of Twenty-Fourth Street and Cloud Road, where we connect to the Desert Hills Water System. And the graph you're seeing on the, the left-hand side is actually uh what we see in a daily basis. We see pressure swings of over thirty pounds on that, that pipeline daily. As uh, uh, we have to send water to Desert Hills. We're sending water to Desert Hills because. A, their wells can't keep up with production, and we've also tied them together years ago. The town, the one uh largest production well, which is at uh Third Avenue Joy Ranch. Actually has a hot arsenic issue, so it has arsenic levels above the, the maximum contaminant levels referred to as the MCL. So the, the town made a decision years ago, instead of doing a treatment plant at that facility for that well, they said, well, we'll, we'll blend water. So we'll move cap water into the system and blend it up to it. So when we run that well, for every two hundred gallons a minute, I gather that well, I have to put two hundred gallons a minute of CAP water. Into the same point, and that's our blending, arsenic blending program. The impact in that is that means I have to get that water into the system. So you can sort of see, and it's actually coming out of the Fourteenth Street Reservoir. So you can see as the pressure swings, we go from two hundred gallons a minute to six hundred gallons a minute of flow into Desert Hills. Six hundred gallons a minute is a two and a half inch fire line just flowing into that, that system. And it, it has the impact of dropping the pressure on the cloud road, cause this line is so long and single point failure, what it is, is the friction losses. We're pushing so much water. The impacts is if we have a break on Cloud Road and we have to isolate an area, we close the lines, all of a sudden our pressures go up fifty plus pounds in the line. So we're actually putting a lot of stress on this line. This is, it's a, it's a single point of failure for our col- for our distribution system. So the last master plan had talked about actually doing this and replacing this as a twelve inch line. We've actually come up with some other scenarios that we think may work to help do some improvement. So option two, in effect, is what came out of the old master plan, which is replacing the pipeline uh with a twelve inch line. Option one is something that got presented. Um, someone threw the idea out, you know, why not just continue across Carefree Highway and then up Twenty-Fourth Street? Or even the power line quarter to get over the Twenty-Fourth Street and Cloud Road. Um, that would be in the area that's referred to as the future core area for state land. But we could have a line out there. We still don't have to have connections on it right now, but we, you know, instead of replacing the, the existing line, we'd be paralleling it with a different alignment. The other option that's come up is option three, and um, I know this actually goes back in the twenty thirteen master plan. It did not show up. But it showed up in the two thousand six master plan that the town adopted, which is we have a twelve inch water line on Spur Cross. That line was put in initially by the water company to send water up Spur Cross to actually feed a, a large master plan development that was being planned. The town stopped that and actually did conservation. But that pipeline makes sense to actually loop that back through Kahava Springs. And then, uh, Brandy could talk a little bit more about the modeling, but actually it does make some practical sense. Right now, when Kahava Springs was planning to develop, they were gonna do an inline booster station and pull a hundred and thirty gallons per minute off the Cloud Road Pipeline. Which was further exacerbate the problems we're currently seeing on it. So as that project comes back to fruition, we're gonna have to have that conversation, seeing that what was, was master planned for Kahava Springs. We know with the information we have now on the system will not work, so it needs to be re- redone. Looping the system, um, it would be beneficial, multiple things, cause then we're in pressure zone seven, being able to loop water down. It could help water age issues and everything. We'd have to push the water up the hill and then come back down. We currently have a mile and a half, almost two miles of a twelve inch pipeline, over two miles of pi- twelve inch pipeline. In twenty-four slash twenty-six avenue alignment that goes up the top of the hill. It's just, it's not even tied to the system right now. In effect, we're leasing it from the Kahava Springs redevelopment district, but you know, maybe long-term, the town takes the initiative and does this loop, cause it could benefit us long-term. So I'm not sure, Brandy.
I mean, it has the potential to pull a little bit more water out of Rockaway as well. So you know, you have all that storage up there. It becomes sometimes problematic with THMs. You know, this station there would enable us to um, to pull some water off of the top end of the system. And when we look at the elevation gain, that's gonna be required in that long uh pipeline to get to the top of Kahava Springs. The likelihood is, is that we're gonna need two inline booster stations, because we can't just stick one in. Um, because the pressure differential is too high, so we'd have two inline booster stations operating in series. And that can become problematic, especially if one trips off and the other one starts running. So if we were able to put in a single booster station, pump it over to the top of Kahava, then we could just PRV it down. So um, the operating PRVs is a, is a lot less problematic than, than series uh.
How much would the install cost?
We, we haven't um, put this in, um, you know, that we were just looking at these options. So that'll be part of the analysis when we do each of these options would be the pros and cons. And obviously, we'll do a decision matrix on any of the items that are gonna go into the CIP, and obviously, cost is gonna be one of those items.
So as part of this master plan, could we also get the total cost we've spent on water and sewer since two thousand and six when we bought the systems?
Um, yeah, actually, I think I've got a summary of that when we actually did the Carefree uh litigation. So, yeah, we could put something together. Yeah.
Yeah, I just think people need to understand, we're making a significant investment. That investment's not. The, the more stuff we put in, the more we're gonna have to maintain and everything else. So this is kind of the never-ending story. So. We need to kind of figure it out, what we're gonna do, and it's also tied with planning and zoning, and we're gonna have to figure out how much growth we really do want. So before we even get into what's a good idea and what's not a good idea, it would be nice to know how much we've already spent.
Mitzi has that. I looked at it earlier in the year in budget process, but. To me, this makes no sense. Absolutely none. You're gonna use horsepower. You're gonna use a lot of horsepower in a line that takes two weeks for a molecule of water. At a hundred and thirty GPM, to go up the hill, up Twenty-Sixth Street, to Kabba Springs, to a deserted area across the desert. It doesn't, doesn't pass the common sense test to me. Maybe I don't, maybe I'm not understanding the project, but. No one lives up there.
Well, I know there's been discussions about the, the west side Dwyb area, which is with the twelve inch line currently by Saks, so uh that would allow it to bring online. This might have to, this might come to fruition more if Kava Springs were to come back and redevelop. That we work with them to say this is a better solution for your water system. Cause right now, them trying to add to the load on the twelve, uh, on the Cloud Road Water Line just won't work.
So then, then you'll bring the water up.
Yeah, maybe that would be their water solution, the purpose that they make, and we don't, this doesn't, option three doesn't get built until.
Alone, just don't make any sense. The operating cost is unbelievable.
And this is an envision for a near term improvement. This would be if Kahava Springs develops.
We wasted more money on Kahava Springs than everything you're talking about in total. I mean, that's.
Yeah, what I see this doing is something that we have identified in the master plan. If they come back, we'd say, we've done the modeling. We have the model which shows that, that it works. I think option one or two or something that we'd probably put into the capital program and look at funding the next few years, cause this water line, the twelve inch water line on. On Cloud Road is, is, is operating above its capacity. We're having issues with it, and it's putting a strain on the system itself. The friction losses we're seeing, we're wasting a lot of money right now, just while I'm trying to push that water out to the, the, the west side of the town's distribution system. So, cause we're, we're, we're.
Just include all the costs, include the horsepower costs for running those pumps and then wasting it through a PRV. Uh, the second thing on, every time you put in a unit of volume, whether it's pipe or tanks or anything else, your THM problems go up. That's more residence time, that's more problems with THM, and I, I, that's one of the areas that I. One was gonna question tonight is the THM issue, but uh, just looping lines, looping lines puts more. Residence time in there for the chlorine to react and create THMs. So I hope that is part of this equation too, before we do these things.
We are gonna do water quality.
Yeah, the model is actually a dynamic model, so we can actually model that, the water age and the pipelines, and we could look at that. We just wanna present this as an option that hasn't been presented since two thousand and six, this option three. Um, again, I don't see it being something to move forward with until Kahava were developed, but it makes better sense with what they're doing. We have to do option one or two in the near term, just to make sure that that water line doesn't get stressed. It's, it's above capacity right now. It's working above what it's designed for.
I think you also have a second problem on there. If you're gonna go up Morning Star, and that's kind of like about where it looks like it's going, you don't have right aways up there.
Something we'll have to consider in the future for a, an actual alignment, and how it's gonna get up there.
You don't have the easements. Those folks are my, they're, live about a half mile from me. The odds of you getting an easement, even if you paid the millions of dollars are between slim and none. They're just not gonna do it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. Kerry, uh, what's the latest we've heard on Kahava Springs, or how recent have we heard anything on Kahava Springs?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, we have not heard anything about Kahava Springs.
In recent, Mr. Mayor, in recent years or?
Uh, they were in litigation with a um.
The contractor.
The contractor, was the last we heard.
Last I heard, they lost that litigation to the very large amount of money, and that's the last I heard.
Who's the current owner? Do, do we know? We don't know. I wonder if we should check that out.
Yeah, could we find that out? Cause I mean, if they've gone bankrupt and they've gone to a different owner, we get to renegotiate. Yeah, could we find that out? Because I mean, if they've gone bankrupt and they've gone to a different owner, we get to renegotiate, correct?
Well, they have their entitlement in place. I'm not sure.
They do have entitlements already, so it's not like that part goes away ever.
Yeah, the 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 THM has got to be in everything we do. I mean, we are wasting so much money with. Uh, we're not kicking our tanks. We could raise the tank levels up and have firefighting water or water in case we have a problem with the cap line like happened. A few weeks ago. When we had, every time we had pipe in, that's more THM residence time. Uh, I I think my myself, we ought to be looking at getting off of chlorine and trying and going to something else if there is something else. Uh, UV, uh, I don't know, what else is out there? Uh, why not solve the problem once and for all forever and not deal with chlorinated water?
Residual, but or means is an option which.
Yeah, uh, what would I see the other day that would I, Sean, what I talked to you about the other day, that other chemical that wasn't the non chloride chemical that.
I I can't remember, mayor.
I I've forgotten it. Well, so I I just think we need to think big on the sanitation, on the sanitizing the water. So that we minimize the THM problems. Eight inch lines make a lot more uh THM than six inch lines. Loops make have more residence time, so that we need, we need, that needs to be in everything we calculate is what the effect is in the water quality. We have a small dead end, hilly, and we're always gonna have that, so we need to start designing for that circumstance.
Yeah, part of this came out, um, America's discussion that we already have a twelve inch water line uh going from Joy Ranch north to two miles up to the top of the hill. That's that's uh, you know, it needs to get flushed out again at some point. And then that was put in um to try and get water up the hill. But in fact, the eight inch line that that twelve inch connects onto is the problem in the system right now in the distribution system.
Well, we're we're gonna need a line down along the road there sooner or later anyway. I mean, that doesn't seem like that's going to be wasted. Pipe. Top the hill.
Well, and again, it was, we were just throwing options out there to look at what goes on at Rockaway. Because honestly, Rockaway as a um, the location of it makes it problematic because it's at the very top end of your system. So we were thinking that if you wanted to keep more water in storage, this could eventually help that tank turnover more more effectively. But yeah, we we understand that this.
Well, you have to balance the the, you have to strip it and rechloride it as opposed to wasting all the horsepower.
We'll make sure we factor that as we move forward. We just want to, again, this is a, the the cloud road issue is is becoming very apparent just because of the the skated. Telemetry that we have currently on the pipeline and what we're seeing between the connection with desert hills and just the customer demand out there, let alone if we do try to expand the system. To provide water service for the west side with with customers and then eventually if Cohava Springs says developments, it's gonna exacerbate the problem we're seeing on that pipeline right now. So. Well, that that set ends the physical infrastructure for the um, the distribution system, the questions and and issues we wanted to bring forward. So now we just want to move forward to the wastewater collection and treatment side of the of the master plan. With that, we'll have Seth come join me at the table. And with this, I can let Seth go on, but this is just a map of the existing collection system in the town. Uh, showing the the greens are the manholes and the interconnected lines. So we're trying to show here is the uh the core site, which is on the the west side. There is actually the state land core area. That potentially could be brought into the treatment plant. And then we already have, uh, um, we're also highlighting the areas on here too, which are drop, what we refer to as dry sewer areas. And state Detroit one and two and Canyon Ridge Estates were constructed with sewer lines. Um, they were being constructed about the same time and uh going through the development process that the town was relocating the treatment plant down the carefree highway. So by dry sewers, it means that they've got sewer lines and manholes, infrastructure in their in their um, their area in front of the the properties. But none of the houses are connected. All the houses are actually on septic systems. And we, as part of the plan and the town has planned before is to try and connect those systems to the uh. Give a gravity outflow that would come down to the wastewater treatment plant at forty fourth street and carefree highway. We're also highlighting the Black Mountain area, the which is an area, and we'll get more details on that. Right adjacent to the the town's collection system as an area that uh one thing we've heard is, you know, the the, and you'll see in some of the slides. Is if the treatment plant itself is not running that efficiently because it's at very low, uh, there's low number of connections. And we don't forecast without getting new areas into the system that that's going to change anytime for the next thirty years. So we, as part of the plan, looked at options for how to bring that in and and also tried to quantify what the flows may be and what that would look like to the town. So we talked about, again, the the subdivisions that currently have dry sewers in the system. Um, state of Troy, one and two, sixty five residential homes and Canyon Ridge Estates, um, it's got a hundred and eight uh uh. Same family dwelling units set up for them. We looked at the the water demand and one thing that we did is, you know, they've got metered connections in those areas. And we uh through the master plan process, we'd actually come up with factors, what we would call return factor. You give a gallon of water to a customer, if they're connected to the wastewater system and you expect a certain amount of that percentage of that water to come back to you and reclaim the water. So using those factors, uh, we could anticipate if we were to to connect these two subdivisions in total, we could generate about. Uh, of fifty three acre feet of new water resources for the town between the two of them. So obviously you have the capital costs of bringing them in, but uh I think the the takeaway here is that it's a water resource issue. You know, we talked before at the beginning of the program that we are short in water. This is an opportunity that the town could look at of getting about fifty three acre feet of new water resources. Back into the town. We'll follow this up that we need to to figure out and and we do have some solutions. We're gonna present on what you could do to the affluent to make it something that we could use. And and bring it in as a water resource. So the other large area is the Black Mountain area. So this is the area uh east of Cave Creek Road going up the side of the mountain. Most of these homes are are almost all of them are on septic. We counted two hundred sixty eight residential lots. Um, so about a hundred thousand gallons of waters to demand in that area. So if we were able to convert this area back over into our convert it to the the town's collection system. We anticipate we could get up to eighty five acre feet of water resources. This is new uh flow that would be going down to the wastewater treatment plant to make that run more efficiently, but then we actually get some new water resources for the for the town. Black Mountain is challenging because uh like the other two neighborhoods where the developer actually put in the sewer system. But we just have to figure out how to get that and connect it into the the rest of the collection system. Black Mountain, we'd have to figure out how to sewer it. Um, a typical gravity sewer system may be challenging. Um, as you go up the hill, you're gonna have a number of manholes, a just disruption to the existing customer. So it might be a combination system that actually has private list stations with some force mains, bring it back in. Uh, but uh one of the things that we've heard is to try and get more connections into the system, the collection system. Trying to extend the system to the north is difficult. You run into the washes. The town court itself is largely on the septic system, except for some peripheral around it. But between the two dry sewer areas and Black Mountain, I think that's the town's best opportunity to bring new wastewater customers. Uh, to both help the treatment plant run more efficiently and actually also provide new water resources for the town. So once we figure out what we're gonna do with that affluent, that would be a benefit to the town. This is an opportunity for us to bring water resources to help start closing that gap that we're seeing on the water side between our our commitments and our demands. And the waste in the water system. And with this, I'll let maybe Seth talk about this slide, but we're trying to show what the the uh, the growth trends are on here. And unlike the other uh grass, we're showing three lines on here. When we talk about wastewater is actually, uh, there's a capacity of the plant itself. And but there's two trigger points. Maricopa County actually requires you to do, unlike in the water system, you can run more towards the ultimate capacity of the plant and wastewater. You at at eighty percent of your design capacity, you have to start your design at ninety percent. You have to be under construction. So you're seeing those three lines are showing the the three start points, when we'd have to start um the design for the next plant, when we'd actually have to have that completed. But um, you can see the orange line at the bottom is we, unless we get new connections on the on the wastewater system, we're not gonna, we don't see significant growth. We see it pretty much stagnant at just under two hundred thousand gallons is the average demand or daily demand in that treatment plant. So unless we can add more connections to the system, uh, we won't significantly do anything to it. But you can see, even if we add a lot of, we spend a lot of money real quickly, we still have a number of years before even the plant reaches its capacity. Which is something we'd have to factor in, because we wouldn't want to add all these connections and all of a sudden have to turn around and do a a a treatment plant expansion right away, something we'd have to factor in.
Yeah, no, I I think Sean uh covered covered most of what we're trying to convey while with this slide here. I think uh one important note is, um, if you notice, these are the same growth scenarios that we talked about earlier in the presentation. Um, but one thing to note, which you could see just from the earlier slide of the existing system, existing wastewater system. Is that the town's wastewater system doesn't necessarily cover, um, it doesn't serve all the same customers as the potable water system. So it's a smaller portion. So when you look at these numbers, although they're the same growth scenarios, um, you're not able to capture all that water that we talked about. Um, so it's it's more fine tuned to what you can physically actually connect to the wastewater system. So that's just one thing to point from these numbers and and how some of these growth scenarios, although they're the same, it's it's a little bit different as to what. Uh, the wastewater system can actually reach.
And some of the decision points are, um, you know, obviously trying to put new sewers lines onto Black Mountain, be very expensive, even trying to do the conversions of a state. I see a uh, uh, state of one and two and then um, uh, Canyon Ridge Estates. Those customers are currently have uh septic system, working septic system. So we'd have to go through the policy changes. Would we? Complete their collection system and then uh the current town code says that unless the system fails, the septic system for residential home, they don't need to make a connection. So uh we might have to have that discussion on whether for those specific areas that we'd have to say, no, we'd want them to make a connection and and make it more defined. The code says if it's a uh commercial development or multifamily within one year of notice that there's an available sewer and available sewer is within three hundred feet of any property line. They have to make a connection, but for residential demand or residential customers, the code currently says that as long as the septic system is functionally working, they do not need to connect. So it'd be something we have to consider, but it does go back to a, in my mind, a water resource question and then just making sure that the plant can run efficiently. So it's just a a discussion point. We'll bring it forward with the master plan. Uh, I don't know if we will bring forward a suggestion, except that these are the options and this is what it would look like. So.
Question on, I I, this is my second uh master plan. And we still probably have about two point one people and I know so we're getting a seventy one percent recovery, a claimed seventy one percent recovery for sewer. Uh, I have meters on my pool and my uh landscaping, that I get about three thousand gallons a month that. Use in the house that's recoverable in a tenth, my recovery ability, if if you put a sewer into my house, you'd get about a thirty percent. Recovery. So I'm I'm, where where does, is that seventy one percent number? What is it based on? Because we have, we don't have four people. We have two point one people per house in in town. And uh, the average house uses ten thousand five hundred gallons a month in the first uh water rate study. So I I I question seventy one percent recovery.
Right, so the the ratio is um based on actual data. So we looked within a specific timeframe over the last three years, we did look at what was the volume of water that was being used by customers. And then we also compared that to the volume of water coming back to the plant. Um, in addition, as part of the study, we did see some flow metering. Uh, where essentially we place flow meters within specific areas of the wastewater system that identify uh kind of where the major flows are coming from. And that also allowed us to kind of compare the water usage versus the wastewater flows. Looking at an average, we we felt that that seventy one percent reflected what the system uh is returning in regards to water to wastewater.
Is that Cave Creek or is that somewhere else?
As as ours, so we actually did our own flow monitoring and we actually monitored the the water consumption within the area. That was the wastewater service area. We we, these were the numbers that came up. So moving forward, it might be a little less, but then we're also talking average day demands for the year, so it's not the totals. We we converted this into an average daily demand, but these were the return ratios that we were seeing to the existing customers tied to the collection system. So, yeah.
That means you got two hundred and. Two hundred gallons a day going into the sewer system? Okay, but. Let's let's move on.
Yeah, so getting more customers onto the uh collection system and expanding that system really doesn't do the town any use. Unless we can figure out how to to best utilize that. Uh, right now, the the um, all the affluent is currently being sent up to the ranch media on a golf course. And as I talk about on every quarterly report, there's inefficiencies in that that system. Um, so part of the things that we've been dealing with and looking at with this master plan is what are our options to make sure that we can get a benefit from this? The existing wastewater that's being generated, let alone if we're gonna add to it, which I think could help the towns uh. Close some of the gaps of the water resources available uh that we're trying to, that we brought up earlier in the presentation, so. And that part of that goes back to the inefficiencies in our delivery to the ranch and Minion uh uh golf course. So I'll talk with that real quick and I meant, I just had the quarterly report with you, so you've, he's, you'll see these numbers. Again, we'd have on the bottom of the stack graph is the the deliveries and that's the affluent that we produce. So um, two thousand twenty was two hundred and ten acre feet, twenty twenty two is two hundred and one acre feet. Then we have the backwash water, the next stack, the the darker blue, which is the backwash water from our treatment plant. Um, and this is, these are annualized uh calendar year numbers. And then we have the excess CAP water that we delivered um to help make up for their their, when they uh were looking in their lake system was actually dropping. Uh, lower than we can deliver water to them, we give them excess water. Um, in the past, the town has actually uh used groundwater for this is, that's actually another reason for trying to look at the the groundwater wells. Help see if we can make up that excess water demands. But we already know there's some inefficiency on the system. And uh, so how could we best get use of this? So the team has come up with some alternate affluent disposal options. So on an annualized basis, uh, we waste about a hundred, the the the, our deliveries to the um ranch minion on a golf course is about a hundred and fifty acre feet inefficient. What do I mean by that? It means that they consume about three hundred acre feet for their onsite irrigation, which is what they are required to pay for per their contractual obligation. We're delivering closer to four fifty to five hundred acre feet a year to them. So how can we gain that efficiency back on? There's some things on their side of the table that they can deal with. But it's about half of that inefficiency is something that I think the town has to take some ownership and control over. And why doing that is what is where we send that affluent and where can we do it? Because right now, the only place that the wastewater treatment plant can send its affluent is to the ranch minion on a golf course. So as part of this study, we actually brought Clear Creek in to look at it, the idea of, you know, when the the town has a lot of land down at the water ranch, we do recharge at the water ranch. So when it's not going to the golf course and they don't need the water, we can recharge it. Well, the the uh results came back and their their recommendations are you could recharge, but you're not going to be able to recover. Because what's gonna happen is that groundwater is gonna very quickly move south of Carefree Highway. It's gonna be down south. So when you start looking at a recharge facility, you also want to make sure that you can look at the recovery. So while we generate storage credits for that water or recharging, which is still a benefit to the town, physically I don't get access to it. So I can't put it back into the pipes to help deliver to customers. So the recommendation was that we don't look at trying to do recovery within the area of the the water ranch itself. And as you go further north, it actually becomes restrictive because um not all of Cave Creek is in the in the um. The model for ADWR, so if you go north, we'd actually have to extend the ADWR model to see if it's viable. And I know as you start going further north around, like even around Ranch Minjana, it's actually a very shallow depressed area, so we don't have a very thick area to recharge into. That's actually goes back, there's been discussions, twenty twenty plus year old discussions about uh asking about recharging up a ranch from Minjana. They say, you know, it's just not viable. There's just not enough of a, the aquifer cannot support that that recharge. So if you, if if recharge is off the table, it's not a reliable viable option, then we have some other options that we looked at. Uh, one is um just south of the town, um, just south of the water ranch is actually the Dove Valley Golf Course. That's this, that's actually fed from the city of Phoenix via reclaimed water system that they pump. So currently that system was designed to actually take water from what they refer to as the Cave Creek Water. Wastewater treatment plant, not ours, their treatment plant, which is down uh by Deer Valley Road, which is actually not been utilized for over twenty years. It was built, um, they turned it off. The wastewater flow is getting sent down through their sewer collection system at the ninety first avenue for treatment. Phoenix is starting to talk about bringing that plant back online. Uh, but so what they do right now is all their their uh customers along that pipeline are actually fed raw cap water. So while we're pumping raw cap water twelve miles up to our town core to treat water, they're pumping it ten miles north to feed this golf course. Seems like there's a little synergy there. If we could go across the pipeline and say, hey, I'll feed you my excess F one and balance you out. So we've actually uh, um, Carrie and I met with Phoenix a couple of months ago and and brought that subject forward. So there's some contractual obligations that they wanted to overcome, but uh they weren't adverse to that. About either we tie into the lakes that that currently feed that golf course or we directly tie into their reclaimed pipeline. So we could supplement their system with our excess water. Another option might be, and we've actually, I had a conversation with City of Scottsdale. City of Scottsdale has a golf course, the chair of either golf course, we're sure, sure in the line along Carefree Highway. Um, that we might be able to make a connection to similar arrangement where we would send our excess affluent to them. Um, and then we can get credit for that F one. It's probably less likely to be a one to one relationship. Um, or but if even if we can recover eighty or seventy percent of that water, that's a benefit back to the town. And then we can actually look at. Discussions like backwash water from the wastewater treatment or water treatment plant. Currently, we send that backwash water up to the golf course. There's some benefits there because it doesn't have to get treated. It can get sent to the golf course for their use. But if we can find a place for the affluent, maybe some of that backwash water and we'll try to make the plant more efficient, but we can send that down through the sewer system to be treated and then get transmitted somewhere else. And we're getting credit for that water too. Um, and then your long term is another option or another option to consider is direct potable reuse. And sort of a new technology being thrown around the valley um in the state. Um, uh, Scottsdale actually has a pilot direct potable reuse program. It's where they take the affluent from their wastewater treatment plants and they do more enhanced treatment of it and actually can make it convert that. What in our case is a class A plus the highest quality F one and convert it into a drinking water and then put it back in your pipes. Phoenix is starting to look at that at both their Deer Valley fa- facility, um, they're sorry, the Cave Creek Facility and at the ninety first Avenue Waste Water Treatment Plant. So they're trying to look at that as an option also. So that's that discussion is going on. You know, we could do that on a smaller scale. It's not, it's not, uh, it's it's costly, but it's something we could look into and factor into it. And it's all looking at the opportunity. Where can we, what can we do with the affluent that we currently can't, we can't, since we can't control our deliveries to Ranch Minjana. About half the inefficiencies in the system is because we can't do that. So if we can get control back over that and continue to work with Ranch Minjana to make their system more efficient. That's yeah, um, evaporation and liner losses and even talking to them about ongoing of how much water they need for your uh irrigation. We can reduce that demand and actually uh make this affluent actually a water resource for the town, which currently we cannot use. So. And yeah, I've show this on all my quarterly reports. Can we have two pipelines that deliver to the East Lake, which is to backwash water and raw cap water from the treatment plant? Or if we bring our wells back online, we could deliver well water and then all the affluent goes into that. But. When they don't use the water, um, which occurs when there's a monsoon storm or during the winter months, when they don't use as much irrigation, it overflow. So effectively that water is being wasted. So the goal here is to try and. Get that water back into the town's water portfolio so we could use it. And this is a similar uh slide to what I show you every quarter. Again, during the the winter months or monsoons, uh, uh, the pond overflow is the orange. So that's the water being wasted from that system, just because we can't control the deliveries. We'd still like to work with them on all the rest of inefficiencies, but if we can gain control over and put that water somewhere else to benefit the town, that's going to be a a water resource, uh, something that we can rely on in the future. And again, just another thing that again, the the making up of the the makeup of the the inefficiencies, the evaporation, what we think are the calculated liner leakages and the measured pond overflows. Right now in twenty twenty three, sadly, uh, for the calendar year, we we had some inefficiency issues where we think we're going to be closer to eighty acre feet overflowing their lake system this this uh year. So this is some another way for the town to better tie all the water systems together. And this is one of the reasons for doing the integrated master plans. We can look at all these issues at once. So with that, we want to summarize, and we've talked about a lot today. Um, we wanted to get again, it's a two way conversation to hear from the council as we move forward. We just don't want to come back with the master plan and say what, you know. Go get some more sleep and come back at it again. So. Um, we talked about the summary of our water resources. So yes, we started off with what was a hard conversation. Say if we don't change what we're doing right now. The town is going to be very quickly in a situation where we cannot provide water for our customers. But we also think we presented some solutions. The master plan won't provide all the solutions. So I think we're going to have to continue moving forward with that. But we will have to start looking at that in conjunction with the things like the town code changes that we've brought forward. So we'll be bringing that back with the revision to that town code. Um, to make sure that we can have the enforcement ability to move forward in case restrictions continue. Uh, let's see here. We talked about fire flow requirements. We are suggesting a change in the in the fire flow requirements from what was done in two thousand thirteen. Um, that master plan was sort of, I think, implemented by the town, but never fully implemented in the fact that they were looking at getting up to two thousand gallons a minute out of all the distribution lines. We don't think that's practical or feasible for our distribution system. So we're looking at actually a standard that would lower that. So we're practical. We will try to meet the higher standards, but we have a lot of. Ancillary or the edges of the system where it's just not practical, especially for when you factor in things like water age. We don't want to be replacing all our four and six inch lines with eight inch lines. That will just. Kill the water age in our system and really make it a big, much bigger struggle for water quality in the town. We will continue to look at though where we can harden the system. We've worked with Jim Ford and and um Daisy Mountain Fire and identifying the areas where we want to make sure we can protect the town from wildlife concerns or wildfire concerns. And then improving the system more practical, things like fire pumps, diesel, fire pumps and stuff like that. Uh, we wanted to just highlight the fact that, you know, we are at a a decision point with the town's water treatment plant. Um, depending on how the conversations go in the next few months with AmeriCopa County Environmental Services, that's the agency who permits our account, our our plant. I don't know if it'll go to A D E Q. Um, it'll probably stay with Maricopa County about what they want the plant to look like, which will factor into more so how we operate it in the the near coming future. If we have to just change it to Apollo only plant, that means. To meet summer demands, we're having to run that treatment plant in conjunction with the City of Phoenix Interconnect to to meet the maximum day demands for the near future. But we will have to probably factor in in the in the planning horizon for the master plan, say a plant expansion or an upgrade to that plant. But we don't need to do it right away, but I just want to make sure the council is aware that there is a decision point on that plant. It's coming up. Uh, wastewater, um, again, if we we don't change anything, uh, we will, the plant will be in a a low flow condition. It's what we don't anticipate that'll change anytime soon. The plant is currently rated at six hundred sixty thousand gallons of treatment capacity right now at the at the water ranch. Uh, where our average day is just under two hundred thousand. Obviously, it goes up a little bit in the winter. It goes down in the summertime. The summer is actually a challenge for us because we do not have the loadings necessary. We actually have to bring in food for the bugs. We actually feed the plant to keep it alive during the summertime if that's. Because it is a biological process. So um, you know, our recommendation is that we look at ways to bring in both the dry sewer areas and to come up with an opportunity to bring the Black Mountain area, which is right adjacent to it. Whether that be an improvement district that gets formed, um, you know, we'll present the recommendations. I think they'll be outside the scope of the master plan, but at least with the master plan, we'll have those uh. This, we have the information to bring that discussion forward. And then uh, the affluent for the town, uh, you know, currently our all affluent is going to Ranch Minon Golf Course. The town needs to correct that situation. We need to find somewhere else to to benefit. Uh, the town by putting the affluent somewhere else. And whether that's an agreement with Scottsdale, Phoenix, or again, going to a direct potable reuse plant at the at the plant. To give us some capacity and some control over that affluent. That affluent is a water resource for the town that currently we do not have full control over. So we have to correct that situation. And this is the different options that we've come up with through the master planning process to try and do something beneficially. There'll be capital improvements, so we probably weigh that in, but also it's the partners, whether, you know, if Phoenix wants to work with us, Scottsdale wants to work with us, or if we just want to take our own jurisdictional control and do a direct potable reuse plant. Those things we can factor in. The master plan will be able to cover some of this um in some ideas and what we might be able to come up with. With that, we've been talking for a while here, so um we could take any questions from council or even the public as far as if they. Anybody wants us to go a different direction or if they think we're done, hopefully we've done a good job here.
Counsel.
I just have a quick question, a quick question. Um, the toilet to tap. Concept, how would, if if you had such a plant, you had such a product? What would you do with it? With the existing infrastructure?
Well, first toilet to tap, if you're not aware, most of the jurisdictions in the valley actually do recharge the affluent and pull it out through well. So it's currently something that's going on in the valley right now. Um, I don't like that vernacular because it it brings a negative connotation towards that. It's a water resource for the town.
Well, I I. It's all pushback. But um, would that be something you would do in Deep Creek where you would actually consider injection as a form of using it or would you be mixing it?
Well, that's when I mentioned the direct potable reuse, that would be us doing another enhanced treatment at the back end of the wastewater treatment plant to take that treated affluent water and actually. Treat it to the levels that makes it potable drinking water. That's what Phoenix is currently looking at doing in the valley. That's what City of Scottsdale has a pilot plant that they've been running for a number of years. Are trying to do. It's just that would gives us some control over that. Again, typically what most jurisdictions do is they take that water uh that affluent, they'll recharge it into the groundwater table and then withdraw it through groundwater wells. Located within a certain proximity. So it actually is a full system. You're using some soil interface with it within that direct potable you reuse just takes away that soil interface. Interface, but we'd have to look at it. It'd probably be, I think it'd be. Very expensive for the towns. Our best option is probably to look at a water exchange, an affluent water exchange with either Scottsdale or Phoenix for the town.
Yeah, if Phoenix does their new planet, the creek, you could potentially send the towns affluent to that plant. And then get C A P water from the city of Phoenix in exchange. So. You wouldn't really be using it. It would just be going into city of Phoenix.
It's more of a commerce, form of commerce as opposed to. I mean, dry water, wet water, and then there's.
There's new paper water versus wet water. In our case, yeah, I I think um. Phoenix was not adverse to the the situation. Just we get, you know, obviously they got bigger issues uh to deal with. So we just have to get on their radar screen, but I I do think that might work out for them. Instead of them pushing cap water ten miles north. Of the Cap Canal to feed their reuse, why don't let us send some of our water down to them and help meet their their customer demands? And then just work out an exchange. We already have an inter government agree agreement with them. So it's just a modification of that agreement. Yeah.
Uh, Sean, could you tell us of what the status is of SRP working in conjunction with C A P? To transfer water back and forth between those two systems?
Michelle, do you want to?
Well, they're working on an inter, my understanding is it's a lot underway. That's just to provide flexibility for the two providers to do exchanges. I don't know that it affects anything in Cave Creek specifically.
Well, I mean, we're one of the customers of C A P. I I I I don't.
It's downstream. So I I don't know that it helps.
It would not be.
Our options are usually upstream.
I, okay. Um, also, what's the current status of recovery efforts for recharged water?
The C A P has a recovery plan and I know that they keep working on that. That is something that. Is going to be very integral to getting the town's water back out because they, we are storing in. The hieroglyphics facility. And so, yes, we are looking at that as as time permits. It's important. I think one of the options too that wasn't on the board. For the town to get more water, but it's not a very powerful option is just to go buy a bunch of storage credits upstream. And then you would need to figure out how you would recover that, which is another expense. So. It's a money issue too, but that's another option for, you know, getting more backup water.
Because how many acre feet do we have currently in the ground?
Um, I think our long term storage credits as of this year um will be fifteen hundred, I believe. I think we'll have fifteen or acre feet in storage credits. So uh, in these larger facilities and we 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 have agreements with both um. Phoenix, we can recharge with Phoenix, but it's a lot more costly because we can re-recover or recharge in their wells. Or we've elected to move forward with recharging with Centros on our project and their recharge facilities and they happen to put all our water into the Hieroglyphics Facility. There's other members, including C A P, that have to which figure out how to draw that out. We're sort of. Be participants at that point. And we're also, I hate to say it, but we're late to the game. We, the town should have been doing this. Since we bought the water company in two thousand seven, then we'd have a very healthy uh balance of of a long term storage credits. But we we've just been doing it for eighteen months, less than eighteen months now.
And you do have access to the water bank as well. So when that comes up, you know, it's a good thing. You'll want to participate in the water bank because they've been storing water and that is something that you could get access to probably at no. Relatively low cost.
So we currently don't participate with the water bank.
It it is an option available to all providers, but there was an agreement, I think, that was circulated. They haven't quite finalized. Yet because they're trying to figure out how people will share, how fast it'll be recovered.
You know, how much it will cost.
How much it will cost. I I mean, the the cost is very low, so because it's already been paid for to some extent, but. It probably depends on how you're going to recover and each provider may have a a different subtly different way of getting the water. So it's a complicated process.
Well, as long as we're at the table, that's what's.
I think it rained and then it kind of got, you know, we got more time.
Right, we got to breathe, but it's not for long.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Sean, thank you. This is really an important conversation and I appreciate the breadth. And the uh, the whole idea of how it's so interconnected. So thank you to you and your team.
The team.
Yeah, I I had a couple of comments. Uh, first thing, there's coming out of day, there's some type of immediate things, meaning you you. We should probably be looking at that water policy again. Uh. If if we're out of water and we've we're over allocated. Seems like that'll be the second one is with whether all those rights are still good. Or whether some of that can be whittled into those things that never seem to happen. Third thing is putting more of our cap water Desert Hills to supply those. I I guess we bought those certificate certificates when we bought the water company. And we have no way out of that.
I wouldn't say there's no way out of it. I mean, first, somebody's got to decide they're going to invest in that development and actually build it before the water is really used. So you've got some.
Hang it over your head.
It's been, right, it's been sitting there for a long time, though, is the point. The um, the commitment to the certificate of assured water supplies there. But there are other things that also would need to occur for a development to go forward that you may have control over. Including things like, you know, emergency moratoriums. So it's not that you don't have to, it's a question of how and when.
It was Maricopa, they're Maricopa County Island. So Maricopa County determines when they build, not us.
If you're the water provider, though, they need to have an agreement. So, you know, that's something that you you may have indicated you would serve them. You know, in a certificate, that doesn't mean the whole agreement's ready, so.
Yeah, and of the two, um, the the one, um, Sila Grande is, I think, if if a developer to come back. Um, it's it's so egregious with how much water they that that certificate ties up. Um, I think that could probably be have to. It's somewhere where to come back and develop it. But yeah, there has to be in the in both cases are actually uh infrastructure agreements. And for the true history is that both of them are actually executed by the town. After the town bought the uh the water company, both Sila Grande and Desert Hills Ranch were actually authorized. The certificate process was finalized when the town, after the town bought the water company by town staff.
Um, another thing here, I I I'm not convinced about that we can't do recharge. Uh, maybe we don't need it because of the deals with Phoenix, but I I I I'm offline. I need more information because I've had exactly the opposite. Uh, through another eminent geologist uh ten years ago.
My knowledge of the local geology is that the kinds of rocks that we have here, we've got a lot of volcanic ash. We've got other kinds of rocks. You've got significant porosity permeability issues.
I I would add that the recharge at Anthem has the experience has been very poor. And the recharge at Desert Mountain has been very poor and you're in between. So there's a non hydrologist opinion.
Can't believe the geologists, that's what I.
Thank you. But man, but back to the the two uh um uh developments over in Desert Hills you're talking about that were. Um, the assured water uh was was given to them after afterward, but at that time, I mean, they don't have any surface water rights, only only rights they have were groundwater. Why do we have to supply them with 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 cap water?
When the certificates were actually issued, I think in both cases, they started um just before the purchase. So if you look back at history, they they were both going through an entitlement process, but the town signed off on the final certificates. In both cases, uh, they say co-mingled uh surface C A P water. They do not say exclusively groundwater. They actually are co-mingled. And that was done, we suspect. Because of the time the town was water was running a co-mingled system. So when they went to A D W R, A D W R said, yes, that they're actually a co-mingled water supply. And then talking with Michelle, I don't think there's a way we could go back to him and say, no, it has to be only groundwater. Therefore, you have to give me a new well, which is not feasible out there to stop to stop that development. I think the way it's written. We would be bound to provide them with a water resource if they came forward.
This is a question that I don't. Relish the town being the first one to.
Oh, had to make our own path. Yeah, okay, bend our own grass.
You treat all your customers the same and hope for the best and. You know, someone will be the first one, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just thought it was a lot of legitimate question based on the history.
Yeah. The the last thing is. We're probably, Carrie and I talked today, we're piling more and more and more work, complexity, plans, options uh into our water department. And uh. What are we going to do about that? We do not, my judgment, we do not have the capability of getting this work done. And running the system.
Uh, Mayor, Sean and I've had that conversation more than once. Um, but again, today. As you know, we have a um sort of a reclassified position. As you know, we have a, um, sort of a reclassified position, uh, that exists in this, um, fiscal year budget. And, uh, we have a job description for an assistant, uh, utility director at this point. And as you also know, the, um, challenges with the salary changes across the valley. With, um, utility positions in general, top to bottom, have been changing. Um, rapidly and significantly increased. Um, so we looked into, um. Trying to figure out at this point in order to get it posted for a position. Reasonable, um, salary ranges so that we can attract, uh, competent. Put, um, applicants for the position. And, um, we, we unfortunately, as we're going through our, um, compensation study. Uh, have been having to sort of call that information on our own from individual websites. And a lot of that information has not been updated. And, um, there are other factors and agreements and, and things in cities that we have to dig into. To take the full compensation package into consideration. So we're. We've got that sort of around numbers, but it's not really exact for current. Current positions. We've got a couple of positions similar to, so we can get that posted. So that's one thing. We also have large C I, C A P projects and, uh, the Phoenix Interconnect is one. And Black and V shall continue to be working on, uh, that project. But, um, there is a plan, um, not to have Sean or any other existing staff. Have to spend all their time working on, on managing that project, but there would be a contract project manager, um, to help. See that project through. Um, the other solution is we have a lot of smaller, um, I guess they call them more maintenance. Projects, contract, um, projects that we need to get done. And Sean's been spending a lot of time working on that. Contracting out, um, services for a project manager makes a lot more sense than. Hiring personnel because of the, the type of projects and how they fluctuate. You might have three or four projects. You're working on with water and then there might be two or three with wastewater. And having that flexibility to move from project to project and have one person manage the smaller projects. And then kind of do another scope of work for, for three or four water projects versus sewer. So that seems to make more sense than, than hiring the staff. So. That's, that's the direction we're going in general.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to point out that Mr. Smith and I were on the, uh, desert goal ten years ago. Where we recommended a person and it's taken us ten years to get here. Let's get something going.
Well, actually in terms of personnel, we look back at that and we do have two engineers. That included having someone solely over water and wastewater and a separate public works engineer. And we've worked out, uh, some of the plan review. That was, that was another issue. Uh, for many years of who was doing the plan review and is it utilities and that? And that is, that is still, um, one of the issues that we make sure, that we are now making sure that. Not only is the, the town engineer reviewing it, but on specific, um, projects. Sean looks at those as well. And that is something that can be moved to an assistant director to handle that. With the, you know, similar background, uh, professional engineer, et cetera.
Okay, uh, the, the last comment I have is, uh, 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 when you go to these meetings and we're, most of us are going to the league meeting. Uh, this starting tomorrow in Tucson. All you're going to hear about is development, more houses, uh, uh, affordable housing. I mean, it's just everywhere and you wonder where is the water coming from? Cause I imagine every other town is going through something similar that we have right here.
Some, some of the bigger cities still have plenty. I mean, there are haves and have nots, but you're correct. There are some out there that are struggling with water. Um, Buckeye, Queen Creeps Out buying water. I mean, there are, there are areas that, that they are, you know. Figuring it out as they go along.
Where do we stand with regard to the others? Are we the middle of the pack? Are we ahead of it? Are we behind?
Um, I would say that you're a lot tighter because you're virtually, you know, dependent on your C A P supply. Whereas other, um, areas have better access to groundwater supplies. So they have a little bit more diversity in their supplies.
I don't like that answer.
That's where they have both S R P and C.
Right, what worries me about the town's supply is the lack of diversity. And that's why we're looking at different options, including that. I think reclaimed water is really a big opportunity that can be harnessed. And even other people's reclaimed water, if you have the opportunity to take some, you know.
Okay, there's public comment on this.
Robert Anderson.
Hello, Robert Anderson, Cave Creek. Sean, first of all, I want to congratulate you and the team for putting together a wonderful presentation. It's very informative and it's critical. To ensure the safety and, and security of our water in the future to be doing this. So I'm very happy to, to see that. I was also very happy to see, I think it was Brad's presentation where we're going to look at developing our own, or. Um, resuscitating our wells in town and bringing those back online as an emergency backup. In the event that we have any cuts in stock on the cap water system or any interruptions because of pump issues. But I think that's a wonderful idea. I did want to make a comment about, um, I think you're still working on some language, uh, that might apply in a tier three situation. And I was kind of concerned about that, um, initially because, you know, part of the joy of living in Cave Creek. Is the ability to pursue our recreational interests. And I see the two major interests and I see are horses and pools. And this was targeting pools, which I did not like. I think pools are, are part of the, uh, uh, real estate that people own and taking those away from people. Is denying them value of their home. And I think that's tremendous governmental overreach. Horses, I was amazed to find that a single horse consumes almost as much water as the evaporation from a fifteen thousand gallon pool. And in this solution, we did not address borders. Now, if it's business, that's one thing, but we have recreational horses, recreational pools. You know, we should treat them similarly. There should not be a special class because of who you are or what you own. That kind of boils down to if there is any reduction in our water. I would advocate just making it even distribution across the board. And leave it up to people's creativity to kind of figure out how to best use that water. But don't tell them how to use it. So that's my other recommendation. The final thing, um, and I think this, this is kind of a, um, elephant in the room thing. But we have one third of our people on private wells. And why can't we have a policy that incorporates what they use, what we use? And if we have to conserve, why can't we conserve as an entire town? Anyway, I encourage you, as you look through that, to look at a way of making it fair. So that everybody in this town has an equal interest, same amount of skin in the game. And can be motivated to conserve in, in equal fashion. Right, out of town, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Just ask Sean one question that I asked earlier.
Sure.
Is it possible or feasible to put wells in the vast areas to our north? The wilderness areas and pump those wells, the groundwater into our town?
Well, no, actually I, I did want to talk to Clear Creek about the opportunity because it, that one option came up of, you know, vice for Cross Ranch. Could we, uh, do a well? It could be, could we do a new municipal well? Once we actually do municipal wells, it's actually held on a different higher standard. So, uh, we'd have to do a couple of things. One is currently the A D W R model doesn't even extend to that area. So we'd have to do a new model update to do that. Is it feasible, potentially something we want, might want to look into? And, uh, yeah, that's something where actually I wanted to talk with Clear Creek about.
Yeah, I don't know about the aquifers, you know, Tom, mentioning about the shallow one that we have here, but I don't know if there's new ones. Maybe deeper ones that are farther to the north.
Yeah, I don't, I was going to talk to Clear Creek and see if they have any knowledge of that. Um, I, I, I suspect we probably don't. As we go further north, we're going to find it like in a sweet spot of an aquifer. We might find some and find something, but I don't know how, how sustainable it will be. And then we also have to look at how to get that water into the distribution system also. It could be, you could be talking miles of pipeline and then you might have to do well head treatment and then the cost of all that. What we found in Desert Hills is arsenic mitigation. That's one of the things that we're going to have to get a handle on over there is right now. We, we, one of our problems with our distribution system is we're sending so much water to Desert Hills to blend with the water. We have to separate that, but that's a million and a half dollars to do well head treatment. So you start talking about well head treatment for arsenic or, or something else. That's something to now I'm operating a, uh, uh. A system that's potentially out north of the town. So it's something we can factor in, something to consider. I think all, everything has to be on the table is what I think I'm, I get as a takeaway from the master plan and the discussions on. You know, we do have a shortage situation that the town needs to realistically look at and then how, how we overcome that. I think these be, uh, all things need to be on the table.
Alright, good.
Two factors to think about there. One is that up to the north, an awful lot of bear rock up there. And, uh, I doubt that's going to find a large aquifer. The other issue is that waters, excuse me, that water is already coming down to us.
Okay, other comments?
You know why I was going to be here. Uh, David Smith, forty-six eighty-nine, East Rock Rose Drive, Cave Creek, Arizona. Eight-five-three-three-one. I'm going to start off with an easy one. Um, long ago I learned that you should never set a standard that you cannot meet. Two thousand gallons per minute. We knew back in two thousand thirteen, when we're working with Water Works on the two thousand thirteen plan. Was not a good number. It's certainly still not a good number. Uh, one of the concerns I have is that a clever attorney, not a bad one. A clever attorney would say, oh, your house burned down. Was the town able to supply two thousand gallons per minute to put out the fire? Oh, I don't think so. We'd better hire somebody like Jim. To come in and be a, uh, witness to say, oh, the fire could have been put out if they did what they said. They were going to do. That's just one of those kinds of things that, uh, bothers me. By the way, Sean, I think it was a great presentation. Your part was good too. It's always a great presentation from you. You know what the heck you're doing and you know how to present it well. One other little thing. Um, the subject of buying water from someplace else. I think it was Queen Creek or some small town down to the, uh, southeast of us. That bought a couple of thousand acre feet of water. And it may be coming from Colorado. I don't know. The, the water doesn't really come from Colorado. It comes around the usual way, but they were able to buy it. They spent a lot of money on it, but it supplemented, uh, what they already had. Let's see. Oh, growth areas. Yeah, there's potential growth areas, but the odds are greatly that they're not going to be, uh, issues very soon. It was, uh, what about eight or nine years ago? That, uh, Doctor Kerry Smith, Ron Silva and I. Got all worried that we were going to run out of water because of all of the commitments that have been made over the years. Some going back prior to nineteen eighty-six when the town was, uh, formed. Somehow there must be a way to eliminate those, uh, supposed commitments. Uh, it may be worth, uh, spending some time on it. I'm running out of time here. And I don't have, uh, Dave Phelps' time. Okay, um. I did want to mention the, uh, uh, proposed ordinance and, uh. Conservation, uh, standards. Uh, you've seen my letter, you know what my feelings are on it. I just want to add one additional thing. That implementing the original one is essentially, um, trampling on private. Property rights. Private property rights are a big thing in this town, always have been, probably always will be. Telling somebody you must do this, rather than say, you need to conserve. And if you don't conserve because you don't care, we're going to take some action. It'd be like saying, people seventy years old have more car accidents than, uh, younger people do. Therefore, everybody over seventy has to have a governor on their car. A stupid idea and a lot easier to say, hey, slow down. Routs will push you in jail. I think that's mostly, I've had a lot more stuff, but you guys covered it so well. That, uh, there's nothing left to say. Thank you so much for, uh, this opportunity. And I hope to see you again in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Donovan Stevens. No additional speakers.
Uh, seeing no further comments, uh, we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?